Like to call the Adams County Board of Supervisors to order. We'll start off with Rob Call, Supervisor Gray.
Good.
Supervisor Hutchins.
Brad.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Supervisor Gaines.
Right.
I am present. Captain Carter Slower.
Here.
Chancellor Clerk Lewis.
Present.
Deputy Clerk Doug D.
Present.
And County Administrator Angie King.
Present.
We'll start out with prayer, Mr. Brad. Please.
Thank you, sir. God is. All our eternal fathers, thank you this morning, God, for allowing us to see another day. And Father, we just ask right now, Lord God, continue to bless us, oh God. And Father, we just ask right now, Lord God, you just put ahead protection of our elected officials. Continue to protect them and their families, oh God. And Father, we just ask, oh God, just let love abide, oh God. Father, let it abide in this county, in this city, in this state, and in this country, oh God, during this turmoil. And Father, we just ask right now, Lord God, that you continue to protect our first responders. Continue to protect us from COVID, oh God, protect our doctors, our nurses that may have been burned out, oh God. Father, just give them relief, oh God, give them the straightened courage to run on. And Father, we ask, oh God, that you protect our schools, our teachers, oh God. That they may be in the school of learning, oh God, if I continue to protect them, oh God. As they continue to do great things for the kids of this future. And Father, we just ask, oh God, right now, Lord God, just forgive us our sins, oh God. And Father, we ask, oh God, for wisdom from high to lead your people. And give us the correct guidance as we follow you. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all, what's latest? Thanks, man.
I'd like to raise my hand. To the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, as y'all can tell, we've got a crowded room and a long agenda, so we're gonna try to look at this as smoothly as we can. Next item on the agenda is to prove the documents. Everyone, look through these. Anybody have any questions? A motion. Got a motion by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor. Questions? Okay. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, I'm gonna let you slide at this time, but we gotta do a better job of selecting, uh, who we buy our materials from. And, uh, I'm just gonna leave it at that. Because some of this stuff on here, we could get it from someone else. She wouldn't be getting it from me.
All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Eyes out. Next on the agenda, a special presentation. We'd like to present business of the month, Delta Energy. Do we have anybody here for Delta Energy? Okay, one of us will get that too. Next on the agenda, county business. Mr. Mike Slaughter with Slaughter and Associates.
May I proceed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm Mike Slaughter with Law &amp; Associates, located in Oxford. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm gonna speak with you briefly regarding redistricting of your election districts. At the MAS conference last summer, I spoke with a couple of your supervisors. Supervisor Ricky Gray, as well as Warren Gaines at MAS convention. And they both expressed some interest in redistricting. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and come by here and introduce myself and talk about the redistricting process. I've handed out to you a couple of documents. One of them is what I refer to as my company package. It just gives professional information about me and my consulting firm and the services that we're, we offer. We're an urban planning consulting firm. And we provide services to cities, counties, and school districts throughout the state of Mississippi. We're located in Oxford. Uh, and I've been there doing this business. I've been in this business for thirty-two years. Baseball is where I was born and raised, so more in northern Mississippi. Uh, I've also handed out to you a brief PowerPoint presentation. And I'm gonna go through a few of those slides. Uh, if, and may I proceed with, with the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, as I mentioned, we're located in Oxford. I have, in addition to my office manager, I have two planners on staff, both with master's degrees. Uh, specifically, I have an undergraduate degree in civil engineering from Ole Miss. I'm a licensed engineer in Mississippi and Tennessee. Also hold a master's degree in city and regional planning. And I'm a certified planner. That certification is recognized nationally. Uh, even though I maintain my license with one hundred percent urban planning firm, I do a lot of expert testimony with annexations. So I testify as an expert in civil engineering and urban planning. On slide number three, this is just a summary of professional services we offer, including redistricting of election districts, uh, planning, zoning, supervision regulations, and so forth. Slide number four, I, like I said, I've been doing this, I've been in the consulting business for thirty-two years. Slide four is just the history of our clients. Most of them are public entities such as cities and counties and school districts. If you look on slide five, this is a current list of active clients. We've highlighted in yellow the ones where we're conducting redistricting. Uh, we're working in Grenada County, LaFlore County, Lount County, as well as Brookhaven, Elsfield, Laurel, Madison, Alabama, Olive Branch, Petal, and Dixburg. About in twenty-fourteen, I did the redistricting for the city of, of Natchez. At that time, they had some issues with the Department of Justice on their redistricting. We came in and worked with the city and were able to prepare a plan that was ultimately approved by the Department of Justice. And I'm hoping to be able to do that as well with the city of Natchez. We also did Jefferson County's redistricting last time. And I'm gonna meet with them today after this meeting. To get into the redistricting process, slide seven, the main process is balancing the one person, one vote principle. The population of Adams County is just slightly less than thirty thousand. So what you do is you divide that by five. You have, uh, an ideal population of about six thousand per supervisor district. What you don't wanna do is go more than five percent above that or five percent below that six thousand. If you exceed that, then you're really not in balance from the one person, one vote principle. And that's really what it comes down to and what this slide seven sums up. Slide number eight gives you the typical steps. Number one, you get, you have to just determine if you even need to redistrict. If you do those calculations, you're in balance, you don't even need to redistrict. You also have to look at the justice court slash constable districts as well. What do you have, two of those in the, in the county? You wanna make sure that those are in balance as, as well. One of the most important slides that I'll go through on eleven, I know you have a long agenda, slide eleven, is really the required standard of section five of the Voting Rights Act and the Department of Justice is equal distribution of the total population. That that deviation be ten percent or less, that five percent above or five percent below. When you redistrict, in addition to that one person, one vote, you wanna make sure that your redistricting plan does not have a racially discriminatory purpose or effect. You have to keep in mind the impact on the minority voting streets. The other words, will not make the minority voters worse off than they were prior to the, to the change. So once you do your, take the, your current supervisor districts, bring in the twenty-twenty decennial census data, that's your benchmark plan. You'll have a racial composition, total population for each supervisor district. And you, and you keep that in mind as far as that racial composition when you start adjusting the lines to get to meet that one person, one vote principle. You can see below there additional standards that we employ. We wanna incorporate public input anytime we have anything to do with the impact of elections and voting. We'll certainly wanna avoid redistricting elected officials out of their supervisor district. We wanna have the least amount of change as possible when we're balancing the, the districts. Also, if we can avoid removing groups of strong constituency from your supervisor district to another, we'd like to take that in mind. It's good to have visible lines of demarcation where you know out in the field where the lines are, not only you, but the citizens that are in your district. Avoid where possible splitting census blocks. And also give considerations to mobile places and precincts. That sort of sums that up as the process. The very last two slides I have, you can see on slide fourteen, in twenty-ten, the county was thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven. The twenty-twenty official census had the county at twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight. You can see on slide fifteen, you have a comparison of the racial composition for blacks, whites, and other races for both the twenty-ten and the twenty-twenty decennial census as well. And we have the census block data for this entire state to conduct the redistricting analysis. And so that's the reason I was here, is really, in the first step, in my opinion, that you would need to do is take a look and see if you're in, in balance or out of balance from your supervisor districts, as well as your justice court and constable district. That's a service that we readily offer. Like I said, we, we, uh, we did Natchez last redistricting plan, Jefferson County, and hope to do theirs again. So with that, Mr. President, I'll turn the meeting back over to you. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you all have at this time.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we'll take that under.
Could I hand out one more document right quick, please?
If you need, if you need, give it to the, the administrator, you're passing up.
Okay. That's a copy of a letter of agreement, uh, for redistricting. Uh, and I certainly welcome that opportunity to do so.
Thanks, man.
Thanks very much. Appreciate your time.
Alright. Next on the agenda, Mr. Jay Cole, Jackson Communications.
Now, speaking, sir. Uh, Jay Cole with Jackson Communications. And, uh, this is Kenny Jones in front of me with Motorola. And, uh, Mr. Nettie just asked me to come by, speak to you regarding your MCC fifty-five hundred consoles. They are, uh, on.
Excuse me, mute your phone, please. Hey. Mute your phone, please.
Uh, in May.
Excuse me, can you please mute your phone?
In, uh, in May, the seventeenth of twenty-nineteen, uh, I think you guys have it in front of you. It's a single-page handout that says MCC fifty-five hundred. Uh, and May, you know, May seventeenth, uh, twenty-nineteen, this was distributed to all the MCC fifty-five hundred users. Uh, basically, it says, your, your current consoles have been in there for twelve-plus years. And this, this letter went out to say Motorola can no longer support software for the MCC fifty-five hundreds. Uh, if you'll, if you'll look on down a little further, it gives the, uh, the last line on it says the end of the support date is twelve-thirty-one of twenty-one. Your consoles are currently working right now. Everything's fine. I'm not here to, to, you know, cause the panic button. What we would like to do, and on the next handout, uh, is where it says Motorola, is a proposal for new, the seventy-five hundred E consoles. Uh, at some point, what, what happens basically is if the console goes down, there's no software support, no hardware support, and it can't be fixed, basically. Uh, so this, this proposal is for you to start looking at, uh, to replace those consoles. Again, they're, they're twelve-plus years old. Uh, if you'll go through this, this proposal, I'm not gonna bore you with the details, but it, it basically replaces everything from the gateways to the CGP eight hundreds, uh, router switches, the whole nine yards. Pretty much what you have now is just the upgraded version. And again, what you have right now, it's working. It's, the problem here is when it breaks, it can't be fixed, it can't be upgraded. Uh, the Ms. Win system that you're currently on, uh, is working as far as I know, good for, for everybody, you know, for your public safety. This, these consoles will tie directly in to the Ms. Win system. Uh, and it'll be, uh, through fiber.
Just wrap it up.
Okay, that's it. That's all I have there. Just one last thing there is. We do have finance options, which I'll, you know, hand out, but just, uh, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Anybody have any questions?
I'm just, now, I don't have no question, but, uh, uh, since our IT guy is not here, um, I think we need to get with him, and get him to look over this and see what we go from there.
I think Brad can discuss more with his board if he wants to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, they call me, you're the IT guy, you don't know nothing about this. Well, what it is, is we changed, when we went to Ms. Win system, I think, a couple supervisors here, we changed from the old password system because that system was dying. So when we didn't have the money at times, you go ahead and go from it at the same time. So that's why Joe told us to push this off. So right now, we're at the edge of the life of that system. Like you said, if that go down, that's the brand of bug. How do we communicate with all our radio systems, law forces in the field? And also that system is responsible for all our tornado sirens and all that. So we wanna go ahead and make sure we try to get the latest and greatest upgrade on that system starting now. How long do we know it'll take you to do it?
It's, it's about, uh, it takes several months to get it, uh, you know, all in.
Right, so that's, that's, they come to scope of work, make sure we can have systems that still not take that system all offline later a portion of the time, so.
Brad, didn't we do an upgrade several years ago? Is that, you know that's rolling off?
Yeah.
It's about four.
Yeah, yeah, we done, we paid off the old system. Uh, so right now, our only thing we, we should be worried about is just hit me out of, of radio consoles. But I think everything else should be paid off a whole day.
Yeah, if I might be able to, since one's rolling off, maybe you roll back on.
Can, can I say one more thing? Uh, we do, uh, you know, we do have options for financing on this. And like I said, I'll get it to them, but it, it just helps you, there's no charge for a year after we've come in and do our stuff. No charge for you, gives you a year to budget for it, basically.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, all right.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is Mr. Glenn Campbell with Jefferson Comprehensive.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Linda Bynum. I, I am the marketing specialist for Jefferson Comprehensive Health Center. I know this is not a very large audience, but, um.
Excuse me, you need to mute your phone, please.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Hey, whoever's on that iPhone, would you please mute your phone?
Is that you?
Okay, we can try this again. Can you give a better energy? Sure. Sure.
I'm thinking, you should be alert, mute them yourselves.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Slaughter.
Okay, that's okay. I know this is not a very large audience, but, um, you all are some of the very most important role models in the community. You bring knowledge and expertise to the general public, and most importantly, you mandate the county business. So as part of the community, I, I thought it would be great as the marketing specialist to enlighten those of you who are not familiar with Jefferson Comprehensive Health Center and the wonderful services we offer. We have two locations, one here in Natchez, located on one forty-five Homochito Street. Hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, eight a.m. to nine p.m., Friday, eight a.m. to five p.m., and Saturday, eight to one. Our third office is located right off Highway sixty-one North on four oh five Main Street. Hours of operation are a bit different from the Natchez clinic. Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, hours are eight to five, Thursday, eight a.m. to eight p.m., Friday, eight to two, and Saturday, eight till one. Outreach helps to bridge the gap by connecting individuals to the health they need while informing the community about resources they may not have knowledge of. We also have sliding scale fees for those of people without insurance or those with no income. Our mission are to provide affordable healthcare to the disadvantaged. Um, we also have various departments. We have medical, which we do MDOT physicals. We have dental, we have nutrition, we provide WIC, uh, public transportation, we do immunizations. We also do COVID, COVID shots, and we are offering twenty-five dollars per shot. Um, we have the food pantry. We give away food through a drive-through twice monthly. And we have lab and X-ray services. We have the pharmaceutical co, uh, business in the back where we give vouchers to those who cannot afford to buy their medication. We have telehealth services. Telehealth is very much like teledoc, whereas you come and you can sit into the television and you talk directly with the, with the doctor or the psychiatrist. And we also have, um, an affordable healthcare insurance company. I'm not going to be long, I'm trying to be brief and quick. We have the medical mobile unit, whereas they, the medical, uh, team will come out to various areas in need. Uh, if you call us up and say we need to set up a site, and we also have clinics in the public school district here in this area. Our vision is to provide quality comprehensive help at a reasonable cost. And if, um, you all know of anybody who need insurance and do not have insurance or maybe want the COVID shot, um, you all can give me a call. And again, my name is Linda Bynum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Reverend John Scott.
Excuse me.
Go ahead. Good morning.
Morning.
Good supervisors, my wife, Elsa Scott, and I do appreciate you allowing us to come before you on this day to share with you, uh, concerning a watershed project on our, um, property. The concern that we have has to do with the design of the, of the project. Uh, we, uh, live at one-twelve Old Meadow Road, uh, here in Adams County. Mr. Warren Gaines is our supervisor. Uh, the concern, again, is the design, because the waterhead project is much needed. We live on the west side of Old Meadow Road, and most of the water on that road gravitates to our property. And over the years, we are constantly, um, losing land because of erosion. Now, uh, a previous project was installed there that consisted of a box and a pipe that was located on the corner end of the project. This particular design calls for the use of more of our yard, which is very small. So we are in hopes that you would reconsider the design of the project that would, uh, uh, use less land. And one, perhaps that would consist of a box and pipe, or one that would not exceed beyond where the existing box was located or the burn, uh, that's on the property. Thanks again for just allowing us to come and share. We do ask that you would reconsider. Thanks again.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, yeah, I, I was just like saying, he is my constituent, and, uh, and I talked to him. I told him he needed to bring it forward because I should not actually make that decision. And, uh, he talked to us about his yard, the design that they have. Uh, he's kinda close to the road in the EWC project, it's close to their house. And then he was trying to save as much yard as he can, but you know, as, uh, like I told him, I cannot make a decision on my own, and that's why I had him come to the board and speak to the board about, uh, his concerns and what was going on.
Frank's coming in.
Is, is Mr., oh, that's not, not Mr. Ford, is it?
No, it's not Mr. Ford, that's gonna be J.K.S. Frank. And I think he been in constant contact back and forth with Frank over a period of time on it. He was trying to get together on it. But I told him, you know, that, uh, you know, we did the right aways, so they was moving forward. And I think the design has not, was, they was going forward with the design that they had. So I was just basically told him to come and have a share of his concerns, because I shared them before, but I want him to come share them with y'all, so that the board that y'all can hear.
Yeah.
I, I think Frank, J.K.S. has, uh, been in contact with Mike Green, which I know you've probably seen Mike out on your property before. He's NRCS representative from Adams County at local level. Uh, and like I said, once he gets past us and we turn it in, it does go before NRCS, because they're all the major sponsor of the project. And then, like I said, once they design, and then once they get with J.K.S. to design, like Richard Gaines said, it is away from Adams County. But like I said, we could talk to them and see if they could do it. It sounds like they're moving forward with the design that they're doing. Is that the last you heard?
Well, the last I heard, he called, we started getting some right away, and I talked to, um, Reverend Scott. And, um, so I guess when he got the design, they was moving forward with the design that they had already, uh, they tried to talk about, right? He was moving forward with the design, they had not redesigned it with the box, they just kinda moved forward with what they had all the time.
That is correct. And however, with that being said, it was my understanding, because this has been an ongoing discussion, that consideration was going to be given to a redesign.
Yes.
And, uh, and it's been a long time, more land has been robed. And, uh, however, I think that right now, that the idea is to go ahead, you know, with it. I was talking to Mr. Green yesterday, he said he's gonna educate himself on the property, and he's gonna get back with me.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I talked to Frank yesterday, and he said that Mike Green from NRCS was gonna meet with you or has met with you?
He was wanting to get back in contact with me, and we went perhaps.
And then they'll, they'll let you know on what they're gonna do, is that for, I don't know if Frank's coming here or not. We, is that, shed some light on everything? I don't think any of us know anything about that.
My question can't be asked because the engineer is not here. Uh, my, my question is, like some of these other projects we got, uh, with the design, did, uh, Mike Green sign out on that design? Uh, they just going on with the design without getting Mike Green to sign out on it?
Uh, they have sent it back to NRCS to approve the design. So I don't know if NRCS has signed, has signed off on, on texting Frank now, to see if he's gonna show, you know, if he's coming.
And we just don't know anything, just the point of contact, that we can talk to is not here yet, so.
I just wanted to share my concerns, and I brought it, and I think it'd be better for, you know, y'all to hear from him, because they did it. You know, they are, and he had his concerns, you know, with this property, his house, and, you know, the last one actually didn't hold up as good, and he lost more land coming closer to his house, you know. And, uh, I think one time we had to actually drop some dirt because it was going just close to his house. So it was a major concern, and, uh, so I want him to come, I also shed some light on it. And I know, you know, y'all, I done brought it up to here about Old Meadow Road. I've been fighting for a year, and so.
Yeah, he has, he absolutely needs to be here. Well, we need our engineer here as well, because we can't have a full conversation without everyone present today. That's real frustrating.
It is.
I, I know, uh, Reverend Scott is busy, and I know he probably gonna leave this meeting, but somehow we need to text the engineer.
I'll text him.
I, I'll text him.
Okay, I don't think, I, I can say once the engineer get here, then I know your supervisor and everybody else gonna ask these tough questions, and maybe, maybe we can figure out a, I ain't figured out nothing when the engineer not here.
He says he's on his way, mister.
Mister Grant. So if y'all want to, if y'all wanna have a seat, when they get here, we'll.
Call you back.
Right back up.
Yes.
Alright.
Alright.
We're gonna skip the, uh, yes, sir, thank you. We're gonna skip to next item, we'll get to them, they're not here yet. Next item.
And, and they said that they would be here around ten-thirty, so it's, uh, you know.
I'm about to meet Bill.
Next item on the agenda is Mr. Bill Lowe, Mrs. Eva Givens, and Mr. Larry Gardner, Hope County Election Committee.
You need to go.
We do.
Oh.
We do. Well, at least we're aware of the situation. About a public, we have a, a sudden home that's not waiting.
That's fucked up.
And we want to survive, and we want to be together. But we, we, now we're all aware of it, so. Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Well, it's getting close to election time, people. What we have decided to bring before you is a new voting system. The system that we have is from two thousand and five, seventeen years old. Can't be updated or upgraded. We have a maintenance contract. And we've been spending thousands of dollars a year and we're having more and more of these machines break down during election cycles. You know, when they break down during election cycle, it makes people wonder how the election is going. So I think we need to move forward and go ahead and get a new system. Now, we've got several bids that are in there. The one that we're looking at and we have here today is Mr. Lowe from the S and S. Uh we've been dealing with them for over twenty years. They're a local company, uh Jackson, so the maintenance is done here, parts are all here. And we think that that'd be the best one to go with. It's back to the same system we had years ago, like the Optic Eagleman we have, the scanner. And that's what this is, it's a scanner system. So of course, we'll have to do paper ballots, just like we did before, which means we now will go back to a paperwork trail. So when people vote on a ballot, the ballot is actually gonna be stored. So after recompile the election, you have the paper ballot to do it with. Whereas with the electronic, you know, it's it's in the machine, God knows where it goes after that. So anyway, we'd like to have Bill set up someplace so you could look at it. For funding, I think we need to touch base a little bit on funding. You'll see there's an application from Secretary of State. We have ninety-five thousand dollars that's available to buy the system through that. Uh also Senate Bill twenty-eight seventy-nine, excuse me, that Jeff Tate sponsored, is to ask the state to pay for new voting systems for all the counties. It's cleared both the Senate and the House and it's in committee. And it looks real good and it would reimburse the county of any expenses they have with the new voting system. So we're we're very sure that that is gonna pass because right now the state has extra funds. And elections is a very important part of what we need to do in the state of Mississippi. We hate the idea that all the counties are going out and buying different pieces of equipment. Be a lot better if we had the same equipment all over the state, so that's what they're going for. And we have the support of the Secretary of State's office, the A D's office on that as well. Anybody got any questions?
Uh I I don't really have a question, just a uh. Yeah, it's pretty much like a question. When you say that uh so the majority of state of Mississippi have already upgraded their machines to.
There's thirty-two, about thirty-five. Counties have already upgraded to what is set up in this room over here? And it makes up about sixty percent of our registered voters across the state.
My next question is, how how long ago since they upgraded?
So most counties were on the same system you have and it's the two thousand and five is when it was implemented, actually oh-six, but this is Katrina and oh-five. So it was around oh-six is when the TSX was implemented. So sixteen years, around sixteen years. And what I like to tell the counties, you should expect the same lifespan uh or total cost of ownership with this system of ten to fifteen years.
So you trying to tell me we sixteen years behind?
Yeah, actually, the, yeah, the D R E came out in oh-five. It's actually oh-four, oh-three technology because it was developed a year or two before it was pushed out to the states.
So now you got me wondering, we sixteen years behind. We finished spending all this money on something that's sixteen years behind. Two, three years later, they gonna come up with another system where where then we gonna end up keeping this one for so many years and we gonna end up behind again? I'm just asking a question.
No, it's a good question. I think the trend now is to go back to paper ballot, back in oh-four, oh-five, with uh Help America Vote Act, it's called HAVA, where the federal funds that were pushed down to the states, uh I believe it was derived from the hanging chads in Florida. They went to a uh, some of the states went to a D R E, which is what you have now, a touchscreen. And so the trend now of all the vendors and all the states is going back to paper ballot with additional scanner.
Thank you, sir. Another thing I'd like to point out, for the Circuit Clerk's office, it's gonna make her job a lot easier for balloting too because we have a machine where they actually put in cardstock and they can go ahead and vote on the machine. It'll print their ballot for them, goes in the envelope so we know those are all gonna be cleared and screened. And they get the second chance to vote them where they don't really have that, when they do just the paper one. Because the original paper one, you know, they fill it out and stick it in an envelope. Well, if they mismark it, the scanner kicks it out. Then we have to go to the resolution board to try to determine the intent of the voter. This intent will already be there before it goes into an envelope.
Okay, Angie, we can give Kyle a call, get some details on the grant and then report back, make decisions in the board, uh the board make decisions.
Yeah, I just got that letter from uh Watson's office last week saying that that amount of money is available. And of course, if we don't use it, it's gonna be lost. But that's, that'd go a long ways towards buying the system, that ninety-five thousand dollars. I hate to see us lose that. Now, we've been getting checks every year too from the Secretary of State's office that according to the letter and the legal said there at that department, that money was supposed to be going into a fund for elections and it's been going into the general fund and used.
Yeah, that's not, that's a difference in a budget.
As part of our budget. But the intent of that money was to go into an account so that we would have the funds to go ahead and update and up and buy new equipment. Then it went across the county, any money at all.
Ms. Givens, do you have anything?
No. Larry's piece of it.
I I had it set up over here if anybody would like to experience how it works. Great. I'll be happy to answer any questions over here too.
Okay, that hit the floor.
Yeah, that is. We we just would like to say, consider the new equipment because of the issues we're having with the old equipment right now. We've got sixteen of them that are in need of repair right now from the last election. And we do hope that if we go ahead and do this, we can get the equipment in prior to the primary. And the primary will be a lower turnout, be a good election to test the system on and show everybody how the system works. So they couldn't get the system in and we could have it for the primary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll call the Secretary of State agent out and then we'll.
Yeah.
I'll call him, tell you back to get your call.
Okay.
Thanks, Larry, appreciate it.
Did anybody wanna see the system or do it after the meeting is over?
Can we do it after?
Yeah, that's.
We got a lot of people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Um. Next item on the agenda was uh Mr. Brett Parker, he's up. Here, Brett, see, so. Next uh City Governor Business, Mr. James Johnson.
James here.
Hi, sir.
All right, Department of Reports.
The Airport Commission's here as well. Got a quick follow-up? You want that Airport Commission?
Yeah, that's fine. Nelson.
Morning, Mr. uh, Mr. President, Supervisor. I just wanted to let y'all know from the uh Air Service Development uh Conference that I attended, we met with four airlines. One of them was yesterday, three was at the conference itself. Uh we received four letters of support that are gonna go along with the grant and everything that we're gonna have in the near future. So I just wanted to give you that update and I'm gonna turn it over to my vice chairman tomorrow.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning, Mr. Speaker.
Speaking on behalf of the Airport Commission, uh I'm gonna ask you all to uh consider giving the uh three hundred thousand to match the city's two hundred thousand. This grant is a very competitive grant and uh we think this will put us in a better position uh to get awarded the grant. It's about sixty-five to seventy uh small community airports that apply for this grant and they only awarded to twelve to fourteen. We think the five hundred thousand would set us apart from the other applicants and uh there was a lot of positive feedback from the airlines. We'd ask you all to please consider doing that for us. And if you all have any questions about the grant or about the funding, I'm here to answer it on behalf of the board.
Uh I don't have a question, but uh the last time uh Mr. Nelson was here, I think we didn't get uh enough information. And uh since then, uh I kind of like watched the uh Board of Assembly meeting and just heard what you said. And uh since the airport is a county airport and we appreciate the city uh participating, helping us, being partners with us, with this airport, I'm gonna recommend that we uh do the three hundred thousand and the city do the two hundred thousand because uh I wanna get a chance to fly out of there with a little kid.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Yeah, a motion. My supervisor, Grant, take a second.
Say.
Gonna say to my supervisor, Gaines, any discussion?
No, I was just uh, we just won that.
No, no, you don't just.
I was asking uh if that grant, uh I know Mr. Nelson had said that uh things was looking good. Possibly, do you think that we'll possibly have a um somebody looking for to have commercial flight long before the year out sometime, man? I I hear you mention that.
Uh hopefully, but it's it's not a guaranteed deal. Uh we moving fast as possible. But the airport director does an outstanding job and he's looking after what's gonna be best for the community. Speed may not be the answer, but it will be a factor uh in it. He just wanna make sure he makes the right, help us make the right decision on what airline we choose. And also, I'd like to say that that grant, that two hundred thousand match is locked. If we don't need that other three hundred thousand, it will go back to the county and the city. Is anything you'd like to add to that?
Um we are also, our Air Service Development, uh we're doing a task force meet um next Tuesday. Um our Air Service Development guy will be here Sunday. He's gonna stay Sunday, Monday, just kind of familiarize himself with the uh city, the county. And then Tuesday, he'll give a presentation, the same presentation he gave to the airlines, along with the background and the numbers of the flights and everything. And we did have a meeting with Southern yesterday that said, you know, if if everything goes right with the grant and everything, that could be possible come in the third quarter of this year.
Yeah.
And I really appreciate it and, you know, uh Mr. Nelson and also Mr. Webb, you know, just has uh sitting in supervisor position. And uh I agree definitely with what you're saying. Uh fast ain't always good and cheap ain't always the best. And, you know, I know at the airport will be an asset for the county uh county citizens and uh I probably even use it myself sometime and I don't fly much. But uh in the traveling, it'll be a good thing. So I appreciate the effort that y'all are making to uh to make sure that we have a good airport and a good quality service. And that's ends my um comments and I give it over to the president.
I would, I would just like to say that this is just another sign of the city and county working together like they are right now. Uh that airport's a tremendous asset to this community. Uh a lot of people aren't aware of what we have out there. And the studies have been done, it's proven, there's eight hundred people from this zip code flying weekly. The the desire and the need is there and I think it's gonna be really great for our area.
Yeah, the airport's doing a lot too. They're, they kind of reiterated their plan for the next, what, five, six years? There's gonna be a lot of uh grant funds that have been secured and and it'll go hand in hand with with this uh particular commercial airline service that we're trying to get. And there is, they receive heavy interest in it from these airlines. So I know we have multiple letters of, you know, support and commitment for it. So it's it's one of those where it looks like N A S S will be aboard and Adams County will be able to, you know, pick which one's the best fit for them, so. I think it's inevitable that we get this grant, may take us not first time or second time, but but we're gonna get it and it's gonna be really good.
Mr. Webb, just to clear up a little, what might be some confusion? What is the five hundred thousand dollars for? Just break it down for everybody so they'll know.
Okay, it's a, it's a risk mitigation grant. Say this, if we bring in an airline and it's a, we'll say thirty passenger airline and there's only twenty passengers on there, that grant fund is to uh help the airline recoup the costs. Say if it's a thirty passenger, we only have five people, that grant money will pay for those tickets uh for those other vacant seats on there. So you don't wanna, airline won't lose money, in other words. The uh, the airline, we'll use the example, if you have another hurricane, Katrina, and things get shut down, that airline won't lose money flying in and out of here. The five hundred thousand, instead of the two hundred thousand, is something that will help us set Adams County Airport apart from the other grant actors. For instance, uh we know of another airport that's doing three hundred thousand. We think that five hundred thousand will set us apart. And once again, that two hundred match uh is locked in. But that other three hundred thousand, if for some reason we do not have to use that, that money will come back. It's a two-year grant, it's automatically renewed that second year. So uh I know we didn't communicate that with you all as well as it should have been, but going forward, Mr. President, I'll make sure that you all are aware and keep you up to date on everything.
And that higher finger has already been used successfully. They they were doing a presentation when they were in San Antonio, Richardson, and there was one airline that we wanted interest in and they really were kind of iffy until they found out the commitment that, you know, they're asking for. And all of a sudden got real interested and ended up giving a a letter of of support for it. So, you know, it it it's a strong showing. And we can do this with other grants, we'll we'll give more than the minimum, make it more competitive.
Yeah, there was a boutique airline, they come in and say, hey, we got fifteen minutes. Basically kind of cocky, didn't really wanna talk. When they saw that the county and the city was putting up the uh five hundred or possibly put up a five hundred thousand dollar match, then the game changed. Gave the letter.
So the motion on the floor from uh Supervisor Gray is from the county to uh put three hundred thousand dollars towards the airport grant. And uh we have a second, all in favor? All opposed? All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. President, if you all don't have any other questions from us.
I want to thank Mr. Nelson and we have two other Airport Commissioners here. Want to thank y'all along with the grace of y'all work. We have seen on the, on the motion, y'all ready?
Thank y'all.
So March first, ten o'clock, all in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, back to Department of Reports. Who wants to go? Seth O.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As of February the first of the July, we had four hundred and fifteen calls from Adams County, twenty-nine from the fire department and eight hundred eighty-one from P D. Also, we want to request travel from March fifteenth and sixteen for three employees for orientation class in Ridgefield.
One more.
Second.
Has a motion, my supervisor, Gray, second, my supervisor, James, any discussion? All in favor?
Do you have your votes?
Yeah, we we gave it to Carpe.
So you have them sold.
What was that number for P D again?
P D, we had eight eighty-one.
All right, we'll look for those.
Four fifteen. You have them? Four?
Three.
Yes, three. Okay. Any questions?
Uh we have a motion second, correct?
Yes.
All in favor? All opposed? All in favor?
That's all we have.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
We have one permit uh request this morning. It's been turned in. Uh American Tower Corporation requests a permit to place additional equipment for existing American Tower Corporation cell site at fifty-seven Benbrook Road in Washington. The project will include replacement. outages along Highway sixty-one, eighty-four, and ninety-eight corridor around Washington. Orderance requirements have been met, and Adams County, uh, antenna tower attachment ordinance does not have a fee generator required. I request the board to approve this American Tower Corporation permit application.
We heard the request. And motion by supervisor James, second, by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
Okay, that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, board. Got a couple of things. This weekend, we'll be handed out masks and hand sanitizer, this Saturday, February twenty-seventh, at the safe room from eight to twelve. It's gonna be, until all supplies have been handed out. So if you bet your stitches, know that it comes back at masks and hand sanitizer. Guys, they're gonna figure it out today, I think we do have a KN-95 and also some washroom masks, if anybody want, so we'll be giving those out, uh, this weekend at the safe room from eight to twelve. Also, uh, and our motion supervisor, when you went to conference, they were talking about nine-one-one fees and nine-one-one surcharges in the county. Uh, I'm here this morning to ask the board, I know Adams County, we have had increases of surcharge, we have about nine-one-one, uh, dispatch sent out, we're getting money brought back to the county. Those fees have dropped tremendously because everybody had went from a home phone to a cellphone, and we hadn't had any surcharge raises in a while. So, just coming to ask the board, that's something we need to think about, I came, I came to your problem last year, sometimes asks about this. We gonna need to try to do this to try to help support our nine-one-one system costs. As we get over to the board to the next generation nine-one-one, we gonna need those monies to come back to the county to help support that. And administrator can tell you, those fees have been dropping, you know, we've been losing almost two, three hundred thousand dollars from that, you know, coming from there, so that money have to be made up through the county. So, these are some of the things, you know, we looking at, our surcharge right now, what we looking at is, we pay a dollar for landline, uh, voice over IP is a dollar, uh, two dollars for commercial business, cell, landline, cellphones is a dollar, and prepaid cellphones is a dollar. So, you know, just kind of, you know, get with Scott and look at it, you know, if we increase now fifty percent, you know, across the board on that, and I think the state legislature do allow us to do that at the local level, so, uh, that, that's something, the board will have to do to raise the funds, uh, we ask communities, we want to give extra for the nine-one-one systems, uh, because like I said, those systems are expensive, and the maintenance is expensive too. Uh, so that's something we need to start looking at, uh, if the board want to go that way. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I think when we started ten years ago, we were making about four hundred thousand a year, I don't, I don't know how much we even made now.
It, it dropped tremendously, because like I said, everybody don't have landlines no more, like our cellphones, and those are certain monies that have been cut out, that allocated to the county, so it's up to the local government, you know, on those fees if you want to adjust, or if you can't go, I think it's like four dollars now, or if you say you can't go below four dollars, but you can go up to four dollars, you know, if y'all want to do, try to raise that.
You said, you said cellphones were a dollar?
Yep, cellphones is a dollar.
Everybody that took the landlines out, I mean, everybody, everybody and his brother had a cellphone, these days, some of them got two of them, Mr. James, you got two or three of them back up.
Right, yeah, that's the saying, so even though they dropped the landline was a dollar, you really ain't getting no money, because everybody got cellphones, so.
So, the cellphones is a dollar? I thought you said it was two dollars.
Uh, that's commercial, that's commercial landline, if you got a commercial business, it's two dollars. And then a lot of these businesses here in the county, if they got voice over IP, they only paying a dollar. So, that's something we need to look at, because I think this been ten years ago before we had all these businesses, and I ain't trying to, you know, raise nothing, it's not taxing, we ain't raising taxes, but it's just, you know, I know a lot of people think we're raising taxes, but it's not, because everybody, most people only look at their, their cellphone bill, they just pay it, so, but, you know, just something to consider from there, we can generate money to give to our nine-one-one.
Let me ask you a question, Brad. In the process, uh, we might approve going up fifty percent, could you explain to the general public, uh, what would we do with this additional money that we get, so that I can know?
Right, so what it is, when you talk about nine-one-one fees, just go for the National Emergency Numbering Commission, they have people out there, when they build these companies, so much percentage goes back to the county. So, when we raise like fifty percent, a lot of that money, uh, with those fees, I think it may be like thirty or forty percent comes back to the county, and the county uses that money to go toward that nine-one-one, as far as like equipment and maintaining, that we take the burden off the county itself, because I think right now, everybody, I think we had, we had like six hundred some thousand we had to put in, we had to find nine-one-one system, because we had, the county got to put that bill because it hadn't been raised on the, the surcharges on the phone.
Is that money, could it go towards these consoles?
Yeah, that's, that's.
The phone sample was right, request this morning was four hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so yeah, that's, that's what that money is used for, your nine-one-one updates and your county.
That's what it is, last time when we first started doing it, we used the nine-one-one money to fund it, so.
Right. So, I can get with Scott, and we can come up with, you know, whatever y'all want, something reasonable, and then we'll bring it back to the board. Because I think that the legislature now, I think in the House, they're trying to, because I think we on to last, there's so much money in the pot just waiting to be distributed, and they don't know what to do with it. So, and they're fighting over right now, it is staying up in, it's just in the pot, they had to use, yet to send it back down to the counties. So, until we get that money, we need to do something that we can try to increase our nine-one-one, maybe build to here to county.
Yeah, but, uh, just Brad, just I heard Mr. Gray said, uh, you know, you're explaining, but one of the points that I would like to make, and I always make it, uh, that's why we try to do what we can to keep our nine-one-one running smooth, because it's, it's life, it's our life, the people and the community life, that's when you run a problem, that's when you need fire, uh, medical, uh, law enforcement assistance. So, you know, that's one of the things that I would say to the general public, um, you know, we, that's one thing that we investing in our safety and on the living witness, it's not the same as see that happened to your family, or your little one, uh, they need the ambulance, or they need the sheriff, uh, they need a fire truck and they can't get it, so, you know, and I think, um, it's just a fool's thought for the public that we are definitely investing into our own lives and our family's lives.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, for yours?
Yeah, that's a pending question.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I didn't realize it, I was just making sure with Paige, but, um, for the January and December, um, credit card quotes, you all need to please have them spread across the minutes, and that's why I was, I didn't rea, you know, realize they didn't come in safe, but that's one issue I had it to, spread across the minutes, please.
Heard the request.
Did you get the report?
Motion supervisor Wilson, second, my supervisor James, any discussion?
Yeah, they can be done every month, they got ready to have a report.
All in favor? All opposed? I say.
Thank you.
I believe we had a dinner at the ten o'clock, is that correct?
Not from France.
Not from either.
Oh.
Yeah, dinner. Right, we have dinner today at two o'clock?
Not from us.
It's only in Jersey. What is roof four?
That would be, uh, I meant four.
All right, I think so. All right. Yeah, I think, I believe that is. You got, what you got, son?
Good morning.
Morning.
Last time I was here, I passed out a, a Senate bill to you all that was showing that constables now can serve property taxes like the sheriff was doing on, on the legal property taxes, and also, uh, mobile home taxes, you know, did you all get a chance to look at? Then we are requesting that we serve papers just like the sheriff was doing, property taxes, the legal property taxes.
Yeah, so the, for, uh, redemptive, on your tax sale, you got two years to redeem your property because of the tax sale, before their redemption period runs, the sheriff was formally, the sheriff and deputies had to personally serve anyone who was within this county, as well as serving one that had property in a different county. Um, the law just changed with the last year that allows the constables to do it, and I know that we had issues in the past with getting this process served, because it's everybody who hasn't paid their taxes and their redemption period is running by that, by that time period. So, I know that's been an issue for us getting service on these tax redemptions, it's the board's prerogative that they want to allow the constables to do it. Um, is you, questions that you might have, is how you're gonna divide them up? I don't know, Paige, if you already, do you like kind of box them into different areas, or do you just kind of randomly do it?
I try to, but when they get them over there, they put them in their own order, because they have a system that they have, it's easy for them to flow and circle.
Okay, so that'd be something that, it's gonna be divided evenly between the constables, do you, do you want just your area, and, you know?
Well, it makes no difference, uh, with, with me and Randy.
Yeah, because y'all are serving process throughout the state, throughout the county right now.
I've polled some, through our association, I've polled, um, those who have used the constable, because some have an April sale, some have an August sale, and so, some of them have said they have handed the paperwork over to justice court, and so that way, the justice clerk would handle them, or hand them to you guys, the same as they would be able to serve the process. So, that was something, I'm still waiting to get some responses back, I sent a mass email out to the association at the end of last week, to say, hey, for those of y'all that use the constables, what kind of process did y'all go through, and I know a couple of them said they did, like I said, just submit them to the clerk, and then, i- is that how generally, if y'all have service of process for your court cases, is that how they go?
Right, uh, we have to sort of patiently come to justice court.
Okay, got you. So, that was one option that they suggested was having it done that way, since that's kind of you, you guys process anyway for all the others that you serve, um, so.
I, I was just wondering if the sheriff had a position on this?
Uh, I really don't, because I'm gonna be honest with you, if they want to serve, I have no issue with that at all, um, I would actually go step further and ask Scott, because we are serving a lot of evictions right now, houses, and it's saying, it used to say sheriff or constable, now it's just saying sheriff, and we have been having, matter of fact, my people are putting somebody out of a house right now, and so I was wondering, did the law change on that, because I haven't had a chance to look, was, was that part of the law change too, where constables are not serving evictions out of circuit court?
I'll look and check, and see, I'm not aware of that, if that's.
It hadn't changed yet.
I've done eight of them in the last.
Well, we had an eviction over here too, we haven't had it, now we have it.
Yeah, I'm not aware, and we'll talk if that's the case, we'll also talk with the judge, now, if the judge orders the sheriff, not the constable, we can't, I can't tell the sheriff, the judge.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I know their, their, uh, most of their paperwork comes from justice court, they're not on, they're not paid from the circuit court to serve those items, and that's why I was, I didn't know if the law had changed on that or not, because every time I do it, I'm having to bring in overtime and field, to sit there all day to, you know, unfortunately have to put somebody out of home that they lost. And the constables, they volunteered to help, but they can't get the paperwork.
Yeah, uh, if, uh, that's what I'm saying, Sheriff, I know you didn't just directly say it, but, I mean, from what I was seeing, would that actually free up your guys so they could actually serve the public better with pay calls and other things, uh, I mean, you didn't just say it directly, but that's kind of.
With the papers?
What I heard, with the papers, uh, or even with the eviction and stuff like that, you said a guy sitting here, somebody called nine-one-one, he evicted somebody, and he needed to be taking calls to probably save somebody's life, I mean.
It would definitely help me out, as far as manpower.
I think it was, the redemption period too, that's a big liability for us, occasionally can be a big deal on a redemption area, if we don't get them served, then we messed up.
Yeah, and that's, that's important, because.
Now, one thing for the board to be aware of, there'll be a, there's gonna be a deficiency in what you pay the constable versus what actually we recover, because there are some properties that don't get redeemed. If you don't redeem your property, then no one comes and has paid the constable, so the constable can get paid by the county to do these, and then when they come and pay us, the money comes back to the county. There's gonna be some properties that don't get redeemed, and so there'll be a deficiency. How many properties do we actually lose, you know, it's not a huge amount, most time they get redeemed.
No, I'm not sure, I think maybe forty, yeah.
Forty, so that's, it's gonna be a little bit of a deficiency.
Yeah, it's not that much of a deficiency.
Versus the sheriff's office where we can.
Yeah.
But I just wanted y'all to be aware.
Thanks to Paige, it was above a hundred, and she's gotten it down to below fifty.
About fifty, yeah, and then it'll take years.
But, but this could, if, if the constables, and that's what they do, is serve process, and they're, they're probably pretty adept at it, there're gonna be more service of process on the front end too, I think, which will probably get more redemptions to us, so, good, good people we may hope for laws.
I got a question for them, please. Um, I'm hearing that people are being evicted for not paying rent, uh, something like that?
No, these are, the ones that I'm having to do, uh, supervisor Gray, are foreclosed, and, and those are coming straight out of the county court and circuit court and things, and they, these are not, these are not people who are renting, these are actually foreclosed homes.
Okay, because, uh, what I was gonna say, we just come from this conference up in DC, man, this shouldn't be nobody getting thrown out because they can't pay their rent because all of this money out here, it's for people to get their rent paid, so if they're not getting their rent paid, where's the money going? So, it's for something different, that's all.
Yeah, this is strictly foreclosed properties that people have been following a long ago.
See, and I think it's.
If y'all can find out a way that constable, because we all graduated from same police academy and law enforcement, but anyway, we are qualified to do it, if y'all give, give us permission, we can, we can join, help the sheriff with, with some of this stuff.
I don't know where you came out, I think you can do.
We can go move.
Now, the, the sooner that they can get together and figure out the logistics of, of what's, how these are gonna get.
This basically gonna be just like we be doing evictions every week over there in the county, you know, we just stand by, but we not, with him, we have to stay a little bit longer now, because with the eviction, with the, the county, like normally, we don't say that watch people, uh, with moving and storage all day long, we don't do that, but this would be something that we have to wait a little longer just to help the sheriff.
That's correct.
My, my, my question was, and I need some corrections from the sheriff, and I hear that the sheriff say by the law that they said that the sheriff office had to do that?
No, no, no.
He said the document has changed, I think, he said I'm gonna look into it.
No, he said, he said, what he said.
Oh, no disrespect, Sheriff, could you explain to me what you said, and you asked the question, has the law changed, because your deputy is having to do what?
We are having to, uh, evict people, it's, well.
Didn't you say that was the law?
No. No, he's asking about you made the statement about the form, where the constable may not law any longer.
He thought that Senate bill.
All their dollars.
No, 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 I'm not talking about your Senate bill, I'm talking about, I thought I heard the sheriff say that.
Oh, about the circuit court.
Evict people because of the circuit court, and they say that the sheriff, the deputies have to do that.
In the back, early on, early years, it used to always say, uh, like, share, comfort, or law enforcement officer, that's the way it used to be, but lately, everything that I've been getting coming out of the circuit court has been the sheriff, fear, and that's why I was asking Scott, because I haven't, I haven't had a chance to look, I am gonna look today, to see whether the law had changed or not, on these, on these processes that have to be served, and we're doing these, uh, kicking these people out of these foreclosed homes, because, you know, at one point it was the constables, all of us are law enforcement officials, now, it's strictly saying sheriff, and it's telling us that we have to immediately do it, because like I got one this, this morning, and I'm not talking about a final judgment, I'm, I'm talking about after the final judgment had rendered, they had vacated the, the foreclosed home, you know, the next order I'm getting, I can't think of the proper title for it, but it's saying that I have to immediately do it, you know, per court's order. to see whether the law had changed or not on these, on these processes that have to be served and we're doing these, uh, kicking these people out of these foreclosed homes. Because, you know, at one point it was the constables, all of us are law enforcement officials. Now it's strictly saying sheriff and it's telling us that we have to be immediate to do it. Because like I got one this, this morning, and I'm not talking about a final judgment. I'm, I'm talking about after the final judgment had rendered, they had vacated the, the foreclosed home. You know, the next order I'm getting, I can't think of the proper title for it, but it's saying that I have to immediately do it, you know, per court's order. Of course, you know, I don't have choice but to go do it.
Now, my only question is this, Scott. Uh, me personally, I think you need to research that and make sure that the constables can do this because the people that's breaking the law, they know the law too. So if they only say that the sheriff's supposed to do it and you see it's in a constable over there and they know that, then what if they don't want to leave their house?
Supervisor Graham will send you to SkyRecruit so he can look it up. It's called a rip of habrilphaceous, uh, prosesium.
Anyone speak Latin here?
That, uh, circuit court, whatever they telling him to do, that the constables can't do before we make a move on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, constable, uh, y'all carrying taser now?
Oh, well, yes, a lot of them.
Okay, uh, do y'all have body cams?
We got that too.
Okay. When you're serving these papers, you, you got the body cam, you got it on? So this won't come back on us? When you're serving, when you're serving papers to somebody that knows they're not supposed to be in a house, you're throwing them out? I expect that's gonna get.
I keep that, I keep that on evictions and stuff, I keep that when I build it.
I think we're gonna need that.
But it won't say I lied or.
As a protection, yeah.
We got that.
So I think that's very smart of you too because when we serve papers, you're doing like that. Just to have an official record, we make sure before we even pull up to the house that ours are already rolling because people will swear that you didn't serve them or that you did something wrong and body cams are unbiased opinion on both sides.
Okay, I think that's a must.
That's possible.
Now, but what, uh, unless I'm wrong, that what I was talking about voting on upfront was the law he brought us to serve, be able to serve the, uh, tax redemptions. So we talking about two different things, you know what I'm saying? So I, I, what I was talking about, we can, we, when you said move forward, we could have, if it was the board prerogative, we could have moved forward on the issue to allow them to serve tax redemption, but not with the entire tax exemption and to evictions. You know what I'm saying? So if it needs, the law needs some more clarity on evictions, we could do that. But if it was the board's prerogative to move forward on that, because I think we agreed that that would be, uh, asset to the sheriff or asset to them. And it's up to them and if the clarity, if the law is clarified on evictions, then we can move forward that also.
I, I only thought that Brana said she was still looking into it. That's why we didn't move forward on it. But if y'all ready to move forward, I don't have a problem. I thought you said you still.
The question, just because it's the law is so new, is every county is kind of handling the dissemination of the notices to the constables differently. So I think that's really the main thing. That and then the, uh, the pay.
Yeah.
How the, how the payroll is supposed to be. But, you know, that seems that we can certainly, you know, work out.
I don't think we need more action for y'all to figure out the logistics of the paperwork. As far as the eviction part of it, the courts, court orders, if, if they issue the sheriff to do something, unless we fulfill that order, then the sheriff's gotta do it. So it might be an issue with, you know, the sheriff or me educating or getting under the same page with the judge and make sure that they, you know, take advantage of all of our, all of our, you know, officers and constables. So, but that's nothing that, I don't think the board could say, judge, you have to use the constables for eviction. I don't think that's.
Let me ask you one more question. Because, uh, I, I don't think everybody's at the table right now. Do y'all think Brana need to be at the table since we gonna be putting some additional work on her office and and she need to be at the table before we make this?
I just sent her an email and told her I would get with her and talk with her about it. I believe she's on the call.
I'm saying on the front end, not on the back end. We don't need to make a motion and say we gonna do something and then it's wrong.
Well, I think she needs to know about it because she and I already had discussions about it. She know it's gonna be another load. And believe me, it's gonna be a lot of, of, of papers.
It shouldn't be. She should just be a matter of, here's the summons, give them to the two constables.
She on the phone?
Brana, you on the phone?
Hi, Amy.
Do you have anything to say for any questions?
Really, I, I, I didn't need, but I, I was going, I was wanting to speak to you out in the vacation.
Okay, we got an attorney term, but, uh, constable, Willie has, Willie Jean Jones is asking about view and service for, uh, tax notices on redemption period. And some of the counties have been using the justice courts to basically deliver the, the summons. So I'm thinking that it would be Paige that just would deliver some paperwork to you around the time that these tax notices are, are issued. I mean, do you think that would be something that y'all could talk about? Have that done?
Yeah, I, I, I was gonna talk about, because that means my work, yeah, I think that's what I'm talking about.
So can you and whoever else need to get together with Brana and discuss that with Brana and then come back at the next board meeting and we'll make the decision?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think what we're gonna do is take this under advisement, cover it on March seventh.
Even if we don't go with the constables, you're still gonna have to make a decision that the sheriff has to do it based on how poorly the new statute's written. So we got, this has got to come back for, for redemption.
Which one you saying about, about she had good, what, what's we talking about?
I'm just, I'm just trying to move forward.
Thank you, sir. Park owner reports. Who, anybody else? Mr. Dollar?
Morning, Oliver.
Morning.
Uh, first of all, I have two full dirt requests. Eleven thirty seven Old Meadow Road.
Yeah, both of those.
And one sixty nine St. Plant Road.
Both the, the problem, you heard the request of road manager, shout a motion by supervisor Gaines, send it to second.
Second.
Second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes out.
Two more, you think, off sites, I'd like to bring four forwards, launch on the Old Meadow Road. The other one's at five Gregory Circle.
You heard the request of road manager?
So moved.
Motion by supervisor Wilson? And that's second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes out.
Um, last board meeting, uh, Batista came before the board, talking about bridge, it flowed out, ironically, damn. Uh, me and Mr. Schlepper rode out last week and looked at it. Uh, he is here. Uh, I spoke with IMS, uh, we're gonna go back and look this afternoon, uh, after the meeting. I just wanted to update the board that me and Mr. Schlepper did a couple of, uh, last week. We're gonna look again, uh, today, let me engineer if there's anything that the county did or we can do to help with the problem.
Uh, listen, Mr. Dollar, um, I gave, uh, I mean, town minister, uh, King, a copy of, uh, his overview of the US Treasury, final ruling, uh, ARPA fiscal recovery fund. Uh, when you look through this, this book, I thought I saw something where it's dealt with dams and all that kind of stuff. Uh, my question is, if, if, if we spent our money, we probably could get it back from the, uh, American Rescue, but maybe doing what we gotta do on his property. And, and another thing is, uh, excuse me. I have a, a man called me at one twenty six Quikman Road. And, uh, he said he had some limbs or something, they piled, uh, on the, on the, uh, road. See if he can get them for me. And, uh, one other thing, we've been talking about it, but, uh, it says allow counties to use up to ten million dollars of ARPA recovery fund as loss revenue for the provision of the general government service. We don't need to use the treasury revenue loss formula. Uh, I guess they said we had to go by a formula when this stuff first came out. But then they say if, if, if you, up to ten million dollars you can use without going through that formula. So by us not receiving more than ten million dollars, I guess it's, it's a lot of stuff that we thought we couldn't do. We can do to this five point something million dollars. That's what I'm getting from that. Thank you.
That was the same thing, Rob, I mean, too, Mr. Gray.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Any questions?
Um, in, in my folder here, I've got this absentee report form. Uh, only your four hours, I just need to prove a little. Sign off on this.
So.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes out.
Um, Mr. Dollar, I, I just happened to look at the pictures. I know when we was out on Long Water Bridge, what do we have a car with, where that road was caving in? Did, I know you.
It was pre-stabilization.
Pre-stabilization, yes.
It was a bruise through the NRCF, so we're just waiting on it, but it is bruised through the NRCF.
Okay. I just wanna make sure because I know you said some pictures, it's actually coming closer and closer, which we know we have some of the most of roads are sore. And thank God, well, we ain't, it ain't a good thing we behind, uh, rain, but without being laid on our EWP's and the erosion, uh, it might save us a little bit, but I just wanted to know if it was approved, so we can get with the constituents.
No, Robbie, this might not have anything to do with, uh, Woodford Road. You're aware that there one didn't make that no longer, uh, county road. Uh.
Willson Road?
Wilson, I'm sorry. Wilson Road.
Yeah, we don't need to do that.
I have it, so.
I'll hold it down.
So.
Are they going to the black top? They don't start at the end of the black top?
So what I've done is I, I thought I reported to Brandy, evidently have not. What she's gonna do with that petition is get it on our docket system and then I'll get the petition with Robbie and we'll look at what they're doing. Since they did a petition, we need to do a public hearing on it and advertise for it. And so there's a process on, on all that. There's four factors and I'll, I'll shoot them over to everybody so they'll have the.
Okay, he had contacted me this morning, uh, Dane Gardner this morning, bought that, uh, right, right road. And I think everybody signed off on it, uh, to, uh, make that a private road.
Well, I said, just need to basically go from either black top or you don't know around where the gate is going to the home material. I don't know. About three spots in there that can do it. Yeah. Just see what they could sign.
Wilson.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sheriff Smith?
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, all I have is, uh, tonight, we're doing our LP class and this, Brana with the state fire academy. So just invite y'all to come out and take a look at the volunteers and the city fire department on the class tonight.
What time?
Six o'clock. Get the same room, sir. That's all I have.
While you're out there, is Brad still here?
No.
Do we need to hang anything on that burn?
No, we're, we're gonna still be up on that burn ban because like I said, we still haven't had enough rain.
So I signed emergency burn ban. I just need to, uh, bring it forward to get that.
Things up till the fourteenth of March.
I need a motion to, got motion by supervisor Wilson, second, second by supervisor Gray. Make, uh, supervisor Gaines step down. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed? Eyes out.
All right, that's it.
Thank you. And that extended that to when?
Uh, it was, uh, the final date was the fourteenth of March.
March fourth, um, fourteenth, okay, thank you. Next. Donald, you got one? Good morning, everybody. Morning.
Before you got here, Brant, Reverend Scott came for the, uh, Old Meadow Road. Is that the?
Yes, yes.
And his, his concern is that the new plan, uh, takes up more of, of his yard than the previous plan. Think he was asking for pipes and a, and a box core. We asked him if he could stay, unfortunately, he had to get out of, get out of here to express his concerns. I had, and I think Robbie as well communicated that, uh, Mike Green and you had been talking to him about that plan. Um, do you know what he's talking about? Have you talked to him?
Yes, well, I talked to him about it and then we, uh, set up for, he talked with Mike Green. And they had talked yesterday and Mike wanted to review the plans and the holiday yesterday, Mike, uh, Mike was supposed to be calling him this morning and going over that. I mean, the plan was pretty much the same as NRCF currently doesn't pay for the boxes and the pipe. And so we're just putting a, uh, grating rip route bench down from the top to the bottom. And as I had, it's been what it was the whole way through. And, uh, I mean, we pretty much start from the bottom of the project and come back up and we, it hadn't really changed. It's, it's stayed the same all the way through. This, this process. Um, but Mike Green was gonna talk to him and I just, I, I text Mike a while ago and he said he had talked to him.
Okay, well, what I'll do then, I'll get with supervisor Gaines and you and Reverend Scott and we can chat that and make sure everything's clear.
Well, you know, we, me and Brant have been, uh, on this for a couple of months. I actually talked to Brant and I actually set up so they can actually talk about the design. I guess what they've been, what, two, three months ago?
I thought this had been resolved and a month or two ago.
Yeah.
And we went to, to sign right away and it came back up and that's, I talked to him on Friday. And he had asked about talking to NRCF, so I set up Friday for Mike Green to call me.
Well, yeah.
And I think what they're doing now.
And I guess it's somewhat miscommunication because I, I don't think it was ever solved. Uh, he, he complimented me and was telling me that he wasn't pleased with it and it's because of, I mean, you had to actually see, I mean, Robbie know, and I mean, you know.
Yes.
Where, where, where the, uh, existing project was done, it's, as the erosion over the years, it kind of came really, really close to his house. And I think what his concern was, I don't know how much we could do about it. The concern was existing project probably came fifteen, twenty foot and I mean, he has probably, what'd you say, ten or fifteen, maybe twenty foot from his house, Rob?
Now, yeah.
Yeah, ten or fifteen foot from his house. So his concern was if you put that same existing project down, if he lose another twenty foot, he gonna be ten foot under his house. So that was the concern. I'm pretty much, sure, and I hate to speak for him, but that was the understanding I got. Because, you know, he'd call me regularly and I tried to be a supervisor, go see. So that was his concern about it. And I, that's why I put them together and let them discuss what was going on. But I wanted him to bring it before the board. Uh, because, you know, I was talking, I was talking. And as you know, we, in our unit system, we take a three to two vote for to do anything. And I couldn't, I can't speak for the board, so I wanted him to come and the rest of the board hear what we had. And I wish y'all could have been here together. So I, one other thing I know that, uh, me as a supervisor out there, I would be definitely willing to go and give it my constituent and put us together and see can we come up with something.
Because we gotta get it right away.
So it was an EWP project done and it failed.
Yes.
And now my head is, and the design that failed, they putting the same design back, was a different design?
Well, I, I can't speak for that. You know, the design was done way before I was here. I just know it was exist, no, no. Because he said today, it was actually a box. Uh, prison, it was a box prison they put in. But over the period of time, the box washed out. And now they're, they're not gonna put another box and cover it. It's just gonna put a river out there. But the, the design is definitely not the same because it wasn't boxed. Uh, my memory, uh, thought back when I first went down and checked it, when I got in, it was actually a box and a pipe. And it actually washed out around it. And over a period of time, like, you know, taking a while, I get EWP, the land just eroded so much, maybe another twenty foot closer to his house.
So, so Brick, when, when you, uh, when we, when, when all this goes approved and then, uh, Mike Green signed off on the design that y'all had for this project?
Yes.
And he's saying he don't think the design gonna work?
I don't think he just, he doesn't like the area of, of the design because we're not building, we're not building this back. We're, we're putting in a different design that's not building the barn back and putting the box back in there.
And giving it to his yard.
It's not, it's taking his yard, yeah.
The yard there.
It's taking his yard instead of building it back.
So my, my, my thing is, uh, I understand that it's taken a little bit of his yard, but. Is it gonna solve the problem? If we gonna be back here ten years later and, and, and it went from man to over here, that's his concern, right?
Yeah, his concern is ten years later, he don't have another twenty foot of land to lose before he lose his house. So you know, that's what, that's all it's.
Are we confident that what we doing now with this E W P in the, in the uh?
No, sir.
Design that y'all got for him gonna hold up?
This is a design that we stamped.
I mean, the last one was stamped, I mean, stamping it ain't the problem.
I didn't, I wasn't involved with that, I mean, we're, we, we've given a design and it's been approved, and that's what we, we've been out.
But Brick, I, I, I don't mean to be debating this, but in my twenty years of dealing with designs and, 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 and with the city and the county. Sometimes they don't work, and whether you stamp it or not, sometimes it just go bad. Uh, from what I'm hearing is, we done bid one and it don't went bad, and it done move a little closer to his house. His only concern is to make sure that whatever you doing, it don't move closer to his house. Because next thing, we don't wanna be buying his house.
Yes, uh, I mean, and we, that's what we got the design for, I mean, we feel like it's gonna hold up. So I don't know, and I, you know, we're going to war.
Yeah, we'll get together.
And, and.
Yeah, yeah, we're. I think supervisor Gaines, Scott, and uh, Mike Green will get together. And they go away.
Yes, and I, hopefully they'll work that, they'll work that out this morning with Mike Green, and uh, cuz he said that's what, he'll, he'll call him, and. He just didn't wanna give him an answer yesterday without, without going back in and reviewing the plans.
Okay.
I'll try to get back with him, and you get back with him as well, cuz we gotta get him to sign the right of way if we're gonna do this project.
Okay.
And I just text Mike and asked him if he had talked to him yet, and he said he was gonna try to call him, so he'll text me back when he does, and I'll let y'all know. How it's going.
Thank you.
And, and hopefully on these projects, it's always been the option of the landowner, they don't, they always donate the right of ways, and we never purchased them or forced them to into their main. If ultimately he's not happy, then he's not gonna sign the right of way, but not by force of it, donated something.
And that, that may be when we, when we gave him the right of way, I mean, we, we go in and our, when we do the design. We pretty much go about our ten foot out of what we've just carved there and get a right of way around that. And you know, the right of way's close to his house, but that just gives the county. A easement to go back in there and maintain that, it's not that the project's right next to his house, it's just an area to go back in there and maintain. So if there is something that needs to be fixed or comes up, that'll, you have the, the county will have the right to come back in there and, and fix the problem.
Okay, you know, I guess just, just being, keeping it really straight up with what it is, ain't no way to go around the truth. Basically, over the, the right of way was been fired if the project wouldn't been a year past due. And a year past due or so, a lot of land be lost, and we know so, and, and that, that's basically what happens, and that's why we get called and jammed right here. And you know, everybody know we coming here, and you bid out a project, just said it cost a hundred thousand dollars, just throw it in the app. Well, if you turn around and wait eight to nine months later with rainfall and everything else, you know, you didn't factor in twenty uh more thousand, or fifty more thousand. And I think what happened is, well, a year ago, a year and a half ago, when we been there, he was twenty foot out. And it was, it was not a factor with putting a riff ramp ditch or something out there. Well, within a year's time, you done lost twenty foot, and now you right up beside my house, but either way it go. Uh, we can discuss our day, but me, you, him, and Mike Green need to get together, our idea, sort of, I suggest that we all get together where we can come up, cuz I can throw our idea, you can throw our idea, Mike and Scott. Until we come together and do an agreement, we can discuss our day, and I won't waste all our time until we can come to an agreement.
Okay.
Right.
Go ahead, Brent. Um, like I said, we're working on right of ways on both the brick two and three there, um, I, I think we've got a couple of land dollars just dealing with just. Getting them to understand, and they're, they're supposed to be signing within the next day or two, I believe.
Yeah, that.
Is that rocks, Scott?
The only one I can't seem to get ahold of is that Maxwell Sellers, I've been calling him every day, leaving messages at his office, sending him letters, this is for Deer, Deerfield Road Bridge.
When I leave, when I leave here, I was gonna go out and get pictures, I don't have any, and we may have some of the, the bridge project there, and I, I'll get you pictures and that.
Anyone who calls or anything else like that, so I'm doing everything I can for.
Yeah, like I said, on Secretary Robinson's deal, we need a few uh stakes or something put out where he, that's what the locations are.
He is, they have been staked on, on those.
He must have been, I suppose, putting before me, his phone, that he needs to know.
On.
What he's signing, and where the holes are that he's signing for.
Products won't be an issue, uh.
I didn't say you probably, I say you sent an email saying.
I listed out all the, all the ones and kinda gave it up, I'll print it out, make sure you, make sure you get it. Products should not be an issue, um, unless you made your brother-in-law angry, um.
As of yesterday.
Hey, you gonna get with energy, they're, they're, I'll provide a match on, on that one?
Yes.
Make, make, make sure that that comes. Um, I think lots, uh, Kutsu Lane, we got that one taken care of. Uh, what was it, Old Highway eighty-four, number two. We are, uh, we've sent over pictures, that's what they wanted to see, and I'm gonna follow up with Cory today, they're, he's happy to sign, he just wanted to see where the right of way is gonna be. Uh, most of the time, they see that we need an easement through the middle of their bayou, they're more than happy to say here, they can help us fix that. Uh, number three, that's Cranfield Church they signed, um.
Again, I.
Churchill Road is the same thing, her name's Jerry, and she's, she's happy to sign, she just wanna see pictures, so.
I guess if they, at this time, I mean, we get everybody to sign off on the right of way, I'd, I guess I'd like to ask for permission to award.
I don't wanna award it yet until we get the right of ways, because we already got one of the contractors threatening, he's not gonna honor his bid. And so if he pulls out, the next one isn't, and we'll use the next lowest bid then, that's.
Okay, that's awesome. So Scott, let me ask you a question, cuz you know, uh, I don't know if I dreamed this or not, I thought I read something where the contractor was upset with the design. Of one of those projects.
Um, there's a, are you talking about State Park Road?
Wow, one of these ones you said.
I think he's talking about the uh, not getting the right of way, pulling it out, is that what you're showing?
Well, I know one of the contractors was upset about something.
Yeah, he's offered to carve out one of the, one of the projects, cuz we were having trouble getting a right of way on, but we've gotten the right of way on that one, he's trying to pull out.
So he's good?
On Kutsu Lane is good, that's.
No, it wasn't Kutsu, it was nothing, Scott.
I think the only one I saw from our contractor was Kutsu Lane.
Okay.
And we got, you know, you actually helped me with that one, ready, so. And that one's necessary because the, the cul-de-sac will get cut off, you know, it's out anyway. Yeah, I hope it was to have it done today.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I just wanted to get Scott, I think I put the Scott office also, uh, Deerfield uh project, E W P project. I'm making contact with someone that can get in touch with the guy about getting it signed.
Yes, ma'am, and we've talked about that, and.
So.
And, and that's in her district, and she's well aware of that, and has been pulling off stops as well, so. Yeah, I'm nagging them until eventually they'll call me back. It, he works for a car dealership, runs a car dealership, so Mike can say, oh, I need to buy, I'm gonna buy some cars, and we need to talk to you first.
Alright, that, that probably will work.
Um.
Board attorney could have a county vehicle, what do you think?
Call that check. Just a white dollar, get it, you know?
Man, moving on to uh, the group one E W Ps, we have, we get a file on that, everything's been accepted. And I'd like to submit a final pay request in the amount of uh eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Which is the retainage left in the project.
Eight thousand what?
Is the retainage.
How much, eight thousand what?
Eight, eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
And that's group?
Group one.
Group one, oh, that's the retainage, okay.
Yes.
And we wrote to Mr. Gray last week, uh. Me, Brent, and uh, Logan from Kama, and they went back and done repairs, and we had looked in on those regenerative areas, they had done repairs, so.
You heard the report, that's an engineer?
I will.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
All opposed, eyes out.
And that's all I have, well, let's see.
You need to get, you need to get with Angie, cuz we've gotta make that request for reimbursement also for N R C S. I think we're significantly outstanding on that amount of money that we needed reimbursed on.
Okay. One day, uh, oh, did the uh, did anyone make the decision on E W P on that, speaking of project?
Uh, just, we'll have it back next week.
Okay. And I, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I believe uh, Mr. Stephen Allen has made it here from this department health. Morning. Morning, morning, morning.
Bill Rosman, uh, foreman of Mill Hucks, accessibility, with me, Mr. Stephen Allen. I have some reports I'd like to distribute to the board, if I may.
You'll handle it, it's a chance to demonstrate your capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. May I proceed to? Yes, sir.
Um, as I say, my name's Bill Rosman, I'm the state coordinator of mental health accessibility, with me is Mr. Stephen Allen. Mr. Allen uh works in our office, and he's a former uh Department of Mental Health deputy executive director, with over thirty years' experience in the state mental health system. Uh, our office was created uh pursuant to Mississippi Code, section forty-one twenty subsection one, uh, the Rose Isabel Williams Mental Health Reform Act. That was passed by the legislature uh in the twenty twenty legislative session. Uh, our responsibility, one of our, our large responsibilities is to uh go around the state, evaluate mental health services provided uh throughout the state by community mental health centers. Um, this that uh you were provided is our third quarter report for twenty twenty-one, largely focuses on region eleven C M A C. Uh, which is the southwest area of the state, including Adams and Pike Counties and uh surrounding counties, uh, non-counties, uh. We are, we are looking at the vulnerability, the financial vulnerability of the C M A C regions, and also the services that they provide. We have made a determination pursuant to statute that the mental health services provided in Adams County are not adequate. So we'd like to explain to you today what our findings are as stated in the report.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's, the uh region eleven region, again, is made up of nine counties with a collective population of a hundred nine, thirty-nine thousand. Uh, it is the most financially vulnerable region uh regarding operational financial stability uh in the state of Mississippi, in our opinion. Uh, region eleven has not been able to provide uh financial information that we have requested. Uh, it's my understanding and what we have observed is their practice to provide a cash statement to their board commissioners. Of course, uh, you all appoint a commissioner to that board, and I believe she's been kind enough to attend today. Um. It is our understanding that region eleven and what we have uh been able to observe that they are operating on a month-to-month cash basis. Uh, we request financial information for each quarter and ask it to be provided, uh, ask that the fourth quarter information be provided uh the end of January. We have not received that information yet, so we're dealing with the most current information we have. Uh, with regard to the report, region eleven is highlighted on pages one through seven. Fifty-five percent of C M A C revenue is derived through Medicaid billing. A breakdown of region eleven uh Medicaid data shows that there are thirty-six thousand two hundred forty-three Medicaid beneficiaries in region eleven. Approximately sixteen hundred individuals enrolled in chip, and that accounts for about twenty-eight percent of the population in the cashman area. Uh, county contributions uh to the C M A C are also included in the report. The nine counties collectively uh provide uh three hundred eight thousand dollars in county contributions. Adams County provides seventy-seven thousand one hundred forty-three dollars in county contributions to the C M A C region. That accounts for about thirty percent of the operating budget of the C M A C. Uh, again, with regard to the most recent financial information that we have, as is stated in the report. Uh, when looking at uh January of twenty twenty-one through August of twenty twenty-one. Uh, the revenue, including Medicaid grants uh from the Department of Mental Health, from uh federal government and county support. Uh, that revenue equaled approximately two million one hundred thousand dollars. Total payroll costs for that same period of time is approximately two point three million dollars. Uh, the difference is a deficit of two hundred thirty-three thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars. Uh, region eleven uh according to our investigation, was largely able to continue operations last year through COVID relief funds. And other federal grants they received in the amount of nine hundred forty-eight thousand ninety dollars. Uh, with regard to current debt from the period uh that I just stated. Region eleven has accounts payable approximately three hundred seventeen thousand dollars, bank debts are approximately two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Which are largely due to the price stabilization unit that was recently opened uh last October in matches. We believe, uh, we also uh believe there are approximately five hundred seventy-one thousand of other possible debts owed by region eleven. Uh, however, uh, those may be due because of the amounts that I just stated, accounts payable or previously paid debts. Given the lack of financial information that region eleven has been able to provide to our office, uh, we really can't make any more specific determination than that. With regard to uh additional financial information, region eleven is currently not paying their employees' health insurance. Well, which is a big problem that has been ongoing for uh a while. Uh, additionally, Pers, which of course is the state retirement system. Uh, correspondence was sent, which are appendixes A and B on pages seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and twenty. In the report uh from Pers executive director Ray Higgins to uh division of Medicaid executive director Drew Snyder. Appendix A and appendix B to Wendy Bailey, who is the D M H executive director, stating that at the end of September. Uh, approximately one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, region eleven was in arrears for approximately one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, it's my understanding that the amount was caught up in December, however, according to region eleven, they currently owe Pers over a hundred thousand dollars.
Is that the, is that the match, or is that the employee's contribution?
That's both.
Both?
Yes, and at least uh through part of that period, the employee contribution was also not paid to Pers by region eleven. Our investigation, we looked at a number of indicators as to whether services, mental health services for. Our investigation, we looked at a number of indicators as to whether services, mental health services, are adequate in the region. Uh, in those factors, we looked at the population served, uh, community mental health centers statewide. On average, serve three point five percent of the population. In Region eleven, one point two percent of the population gets served. We also looked at Medicaid billing. Uh, if you look at the Medicaid population in Region eleven, per individual on Medicaid, two dollars and eighty-six cents, uh, is billed per person by Region eleven. The state average on that is twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, and there, there are, of course, other regions that are higher than that. Uh, looking at employment information, going back to, uh, again, September of twenty-twenty-one, Region eleven had ninety-eight employees, there were thirty vacant positions. That amounts to a vacancy rate of twenty-three point four percent. It's my understanding that some additional employees have been hired through, uh, grants. There was an enhancement grant, according to Region eleven, provided by the Department of Mental Health for staffing for the crisis stabilization unit. And additionally, uh, and, and we credit Region eleven for this, they obtained a certified community behavioral health center grant from SAMSSO, which is the federal mental health authority, and, uh, they, uh, represent that they have hired additional employees through that grant. Uh, we looked at commitments per population. For the region, the commitment average is the second highest in the state. One out of every four hundred persons from Region eleven is committed, uh, under January fourth quarter. The average in the state is one out of every six hundred and thirty persons. Uh, Adams County, in full disclosure, is, is doing better than that number. They are, they are on track with the commitment number. Uh, we, you know, the, the point of looking at the employment numbers is, if you don't have employees that are certified provincial to provide services and are able to bill for services, you know, you're a financial risk, and additionally, if, if you're short-staffed, you aren't providing services to the number of people that, that are needed in service. We also looked at, uh, for budget year twenty-one, the grant funds pulled down, uh, by Region eleven with regard to, they were offered, uh, over two million dollars, two point three million dollars available from the Department of Mental Health in grant funds. They drew down one point three million dollars. So again, if you're not, if you're not drawing down your grant funds, you're not providing services. If you're not billing Medicaid, if you're not drawing down your grant funds, that's the big, big chunk of the pie as far as CMHC funding. Uh, and that's an indicator, again, if you're not providing services. Additionally, Mr. Allen and I visited, uh, all county offices in Region eleven, including the offices in Adams County, and personally observed that services, in many cases, were not being provided. So, uh, you know, to wrap up on services, they're really, in, in our opinion, there are about four services that are key indicators as to whether you have a successful, uh, CMHC that's providing appropriate services. One is psychosocial rehabilitation for, uh, as large as geared for people that are discharged from state hospitals. Uh, Region eleven has one psychosocial rehabilitation program, and is located in Pike County, it has approximately thirty, I think thirty-two slots. Uh, you, that service is offered to persons that live in four county area. Uh, there was an Adams County PSR prior to COVID, and I understand that the building was donated maybe to the historical society that those services were provided in. And, uh, currently, there are no PSR services in Adams County. So if you're getting PSR, you gotta be from one of the four counties. Adams County and surrounding counties don't get that service. Additionally, day treatment services in school for children and youth, they are not provided in the, uh, Region eleven region, and also not provided in Adams County. Uh, intensive community support services, which are case managers, which are people that provide individual therapy, uh, to persons. Again, looking at your employment rate, rate is low, so you don't have the people necessary to, to provide the services. Uh, the other, we think, really essential community service, and, and by the way, PSR and day treatment are core services required to be provided by the Department of Mental Health. Uh, the fourth service is crisis stabilization unit. Uh, the Department of Mental Health offered, uh, grants in FY twenty and FY twenty-one for a crisis stabilization unit in Region eleven. That grant was declined by Region eleven. In FY twenty-two, there is a crisis stabilization unit open in Natchez that is eight beds that, uh, we, we credit, uh, Region eleven for opening, and we're glad that it is here. Uh, however, it is long overdue, and it's our understanding that there are some stacking, uh, issues there. It's an eight-bed unit. And, uh, you know, it was open on October eighteenth, I believe, but, you know, we have some questions about the level of services that are being provided in that unit. Uh, typically, that's a small C issue, so we applaud the progress there, but at the same time, we don't really think that, you know, crisis services are being offered in Adams County or, uh, other Regional, Region eleven counties to the level that they should be. So our purpose here today is to inform the board that, uh, Adams County is not receiving adequate mental health services, and ask the board for a plan, uh, to provide adequate services within thirty days.
Any questions?
Yeah. How are we gonna come up with a plan? That's the question I have. How are we gonna go about who we need to contact to come up with a plan? Yes. He gave us what we need, and we need to figure out what we need to pull?
We, yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Stand before the mic.
Give us your name if you would.
Sure. Sterling Dance, Executive Director of Region eleven. Um, this is not the first time that I've stood before you and talked about issues that we've had and what we were doing about that. Um, when we talk about a plan, we have been working on this plan and continue to work on this with that additional funding that Mr. Rosman was talking about, with CCVHC and a new grant CMHC that will provide us the opportunity to provide PSR and day treatments in the very near future. Actually, we have, um, just renovated the offices across from the crisis unit for a PSR for Adams County to reopen, and that's gonna be reopening tomorrow. And we're working on the day treatment. Um, for the CMHC grant across the region, we are going to be, um, adding five PSR programs and seven more day treatments. We have been here for forty-plus years and want to continue to be here and want to be with y'all and work on this plan to show that we are and will provide these mental health services. So when you ask about coming up with a plan, I'm very willing to sit down and let's talk about what we can do. We're invested here. Uh, we're about to take, we have, um, several buildings in Adams County. One of them is over in the industrial park area, which is not very conducive to people coming for services. So we're in the process, we have, um, we're moving A and D, which is alcohol and drug services, over across the way from the crisis unit, so that we can actually take our children's unit that is, um, over there on Beltese and bring it over here to Wall Street. So it makes it easier and more accessible for, for individuals to receive those services. So we're, we're working on a plan. Um, you know, I can attest, and this probably took a bit of time, but I can sit down with y'all and make the point that with some of the things that Mr. Rosman had brought out. And what we've done, I'm ready to start to work towards improving those factors.
What's the, what's the repercussions for unable to develop a plan?
Well, the, according to the, the code sections that I referenced, uh, we're first to come before the board and advise, uh, that there are not adequate, uh, services and ask you for a plan. Uh, after, uh, that time has expired, you presented the plan, if we deem the plan to be inadequate, uh, we have an opportunity to develop our own plan and, uh, offer the, the service that is not adequate, or bundled services that is not adequate to, uh, contiguous community mental health center regions to see if they are interested in coming in and providing the service. Uh, if no one is interested in coming in and providing the service or services, uh, it would then go to other CMHC regions throughout the state. And, uh, if there, if a solution couldn't be arrived at there, uh, it would go out for an R and P through the State Board of Mental Health to see if a private provider or whomever is interested in coming in and providing services.
Did y'all know about the lack of financial information that they didn't request?
And I do think, I, I, and I'll have to verify that, um, the January cash flow statement, if it was put, um, if it was sent in, I think it was sent to Jerry earlier in the week, but I have to verify that. We have been in the process of working through two new EHR systems in the last three years. And part of that package, um, and I've, and I've spoken to y'all about this in the past, that we had, um, a system that had our electronic health record as well as our financial information in it that was sunsetted. And we had to move to a new system, which was on target, and we went live on that in, I have made, maybe twenty-twenty. So when we did that, we found that it was not, um, conducive to the data gathering that we needed. It was not as sophisticated as our previous, um, EHR. So we had to migrate to a new EHR that we just went live with in October and have had a lot of billing issues with that. And with all of that said, that is our financial piece that we're having difficulty moving from that old system to the on-target system in order to, to produce the type of statements that they're asking for. So we are working on bringing those forward to do that.
Do you give them to them now?
It's a cash flow statement that we've been giving them. This is what we give our board every month. Currently, I have over almost four thousand hours of billable services hung up in the new EHR. And that does not include any of our PSR programs, our two programs that we have in Pike County. So we have probably close to four hundred plus thousand in services right now that we are working to get out of our system. Not saying that that's gonna make everything all better by any means, but it would help with our cash flow. The PERS will be caught up by the end of the month, if not sooner. I have the funds to do that.
Are you going to, the rest of the counties in the region, same, same thing, or is this just you?
We, we have, uh, like I stated, we've visited every county. We have attended a commissioners' meeting for Region eleven. Yes, we intend to visit, uh, every county, inform them, and the same thing we've informed you of, but this is the first place that we have been. Uh, if I may, I'd like to make a couple additional financial comments.
Go ahead.
Our, our, uh, financial evaluator is Jerry Mayo. Mr. Mayo was, uh, the executive director of Region twelve CMHC for over twenty years. He is a retired certified public accountant. Uh, the information that has been provided to us, to our office by Region eleven is not the information requested. Uh, as Ms. Vince said, uh, it is a cash statement, the same thing that they provide to their board. Uh, the financial information that I've given you is what we know, we believe. We don't know how bad the financial situation of Region eleven actually is. Uh, the CCVHC grant that Ms. Vince obtained, uh, and that is a newer model, uh, that, that a number of states have reported to us that they've implemented effectively. And we credit Ms. Vince for getting that grant, and, and, uh, that's a good thing. However, it is a, uh, four million dollar grant, two million dollars per, uh, for, uh, two years, and it is a time-limited grant, there's no money behind that. And we believe, from what we can tell, is the funds from that grant have, have allowed Ms. Vince to hire additional employees to possibly, and I'm gonna allege you something here that I don't know for fact, but to possibly shift funds to be able to pay PERS. It was represented to us that the PERS debt would be caught up, and in fact, it was in December. But here we are again in Mar- it's in February, and we're over a hundred thousand dollars behind again. And, uh, I thank Ms. Vince for her effort, she has worked very hard, uh, and, and that is apparent. But unfortunately, uh, the information that we got in the third quarter, our tour of the region and Adams County, we believe services are not adequate. And, and, you know, financially today, from what we can tell, and, uh, the numbers that we got for the third quarter, uh, the region is financially vulnerable, and that is, that is just as important in many ways as providing services. Because if you're not gonna be there, you can't provide services long term.
And I am correct that we, you just started here in Adams County, so you have to go back through the other counties and, uh, and it's Region eleven, and do the same thing assessment for them?
Well, yes and, yes, sir, and no. Uh, you know, the information that is in that book and in these appendixes is for every county in Region eleven. We have conducted our assessment for all those counties. We're required by statute to appear here, excuse me, for every board of supervisors and inform them that services are not adequate in the region. We intend to do that as soon as possible, uh, but it is not a county, so I can't tell you exactly how long that would take.
No, no. Not, not cutting you off.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, was it to start here? Were you the first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There, there are two centers of operations in Region eleven. One is Adams County, one is Pike County. Many of the services, uh, for instance, long-acting injectables, uh, for the seriously mentally ill, if you're in the surrounding counties around Adams County, you have to come to Adams County to get your injectables. So this is a very, very important county to Region eleven, so we felt like it was appropriate to start with me. Uh, and, and, you know, with regard to services, what we're telling you here today is the services in Adams County are not adequate. You don't have to lay on nine counties to come up with your plan and try to fix your county. We're telling you what is in your county is not adequate.
Yes, sir. So basically, we're just trying to get the same communication. You know, basically, I just believe in communication, because the communication is the key. You know, it's not pointing the finger at this person or that person, or, or you picking on us, that, that, that's not the case, you know? I just feel like regardless, if you got a problem, all wrong, folks sitting at the table, you address the problem. All of us come together as your job, her job, and our job, see what we can do, because mental health is very important to our community. I mean, mental health is very important all over the world, we see it happening every single day. And so, you know, it's not anybody pointing the finger, but we need to be on the same lines of communication so when we do create a plan, that everybody's on, on one page.
Yes, sir.
That's all I would.
I agree totally.
And, and the plan here can impact all the other counties.
Yes.
Um, with the CCVHC grant, our whole goal was to be able to improve accessibility in our smaller counties. And we have started to be able to do that. So anything that we do in any county is gonna help. So anything that we do in any county is going to help the other counties.
I hear your thoughts.
Anybody else have any questions?
In the process of creating a plan, are we going to try to create a short-term plan to get us out of where we at and a long-term plan? We just going to create a long-term plan?
That's, we, we, in my opinion.
We're going to be working.
Yeah, yes. We're going to, I think, to look at the short-term, what, what, what things are that we're going to change immediately because we still have some funding. We talked about the enhancement grant for the crisis unit to be able to take more higher acuity types of clients and the PSR programs that we're going to get going here in day treatment. We can look at what's with the immediate and start with that timeline and look at a longer-term plan. That actually encompasses everything in every body.
And you say about our services here is wasn't adequate?
Yes, sir.
And the question is, I hate to ask this question, but why is the service not adequate? Is it because of funding? Is it because, what is it because of?
It's been a combination of things over the last many years. One of it is funding. The other is being able to provide, to find professionals who are qualified in rural areas. And this isn't just unique to us. It's across the state, especially now after COVID. COVID did impact us greatly as well. I know that I, when I, we met, I had invited each county or representative, the chancellor, board supervisor, whoever, and I, you know, be able to talk about our personal infancy because I've been very transparent with all of this. That when we went in to talk about that, I provided some numbers that showed over the last four years, the, as, as COVID started and the impact that had on our numbers, which cut them in half. So with the CCVHC, and that's why we went out for that federal funding, was to help stabilize us in order that we can start to improve our staff, raise for our staff, find qualified staff and make sure we're happy, we're able to provide the services in the smaller counties where we haven't been able to provide them what we need to be providing them.
So is there any additional funding out there because of what you just said? Because I just got to feel like watching DC and they talking about funding for everything.
We, we do continue to look for other funding. We actually, with the CCVHC, we received that $4 million. Then in September, we were, we were awarded three other, three other million dollars. And that's where it's called CMHC grant, Community Mental Health Center Clinic. And those are the funds that we're using to implement the new PSR programs and the day treatments that he referenced. So, and we continue to still look for other funding, yes. And you know, when we talk about the, the grant funding from DMH that, you know, there was what, close to 800,000, I guess, maybe that we did, did not accept last year? That was the crisis stabilization unit monies, which at that point in time, we didn't have a crisis stabilization unit.
My last question.
Sure.
In the process of creating this plan, I'm trying to find you as a big committee over here.
Well, I think, yeah, and, and, and you know, we work closely with Brandy and Scott. And then I think a member or two of your, of your board would start.
Yeah, I, I, I think two members of our board need to be part of that plan. Anybody want to volunteer?
I think we volunteer number one.
I guess I have to volunteer. Nobody wants to do it.
And I also said, I'll do my best.
Okay. Any other questions?
So you're going to get with Brandy or Brandy going to get with us?
It makes the decision of whether the plan's sufficient or adequate.
Our office does that.
Is that you?
Yes.
Is that your cover that you left?
It is.
So his book telling us everything that's wrong and we got to figure it out?
The, well, it doesn't tell you everything that's wrong. It, I summarized what's in there. There's additional information. If you look the appendices, this is by county information. If you look at about page one through seven, it's information pain region level.
And that's basically why I'm saying, if there's something in there that, you know, communication is the key. If there's something that we need, could you make it possible that we can get all the information that we need to make a successful plan? Or tell us how to find the information? So you know, basically what we trying to do, I mean, you came before, as you said, and, and we want to be in compliance. You see, we trying to put it together. But if we don't have adequate information to get an adequate plan, then we automatically setting ourselves up for failure. And we want to come in compliance with what you doing. But if, if we don't have a tool to use, we'll never be able to have an adequate plan for you. And that's how we doing, trying to get the communication right.
Yes, thank you for that. You know, and trying to summarize the financial condition. One, region has got to be financially stable. And, and two, it's got to provide necessary services. There are four to serve, excuse me, core services for, for adults, children, alcohol and drug services that are required to be provided in all the regions. We can, we can provide you with those list of services. I stated previously, there are four things that really need a hard look. In our opinions, two of those are, are DMH core services. One is PSR, psychosocial rehabilitation. Another is children's day treatment in schools. It has not been provided for a very, very long time in your region. Three, looking at intensive community support services, looking at the, the employment situation, the qualified number of providers that Region 11 has to provide services in Adams County and elsewhere. And, and four, looking at crisis services and crisis stabilization.
Yeah, and, and I understand, but if any way is possible, I mean, she here and she, I mean, she, Ms. Vance asked for needing information. We are just going to sit there with the plan and come up with it. And so that's all that we was trying to make sure. And I, I heard you when, when you went over your presentation, you did, you know, a great job with making sure that we had kind of understand what was wrong. But as long as she have it, we can try to assist her, um, trying to get her what they need, get us back in.
Yes, sir. And I'm glad to answer your questions. Or we've worked for Ms. Vance, worked with Ms. Vance for several months and glad to continue to answer your questions she has.
Yes, and I appreciate, I really appreciate it also.
Thank you, sir.
Have you laid, have you laid this criteria out before this? The accessibility plus the core?
Um, to another county?
No, to, to our region before. Have you told Ms. Vance our, your expectations?
I think given our, our, all of our conversations, that's apparent. Yes, sir.
And that's where we started.
This is what I'm getting.
No, sir.
Does every county have a facility or, or an office?
Yes.
Every city? Do, do we need a kind of, maybe only have like six offices instead of 11? Because it seems like a lot of them are closed.
Well, we've actually started making those changes. And we want that, we want to have an office in every county for that accessibility that he was speaking of. For the last several years, we had utilized front office staff in our smaller counties to go between two of the counties. So the offices weren't always open with a front office person that could have somebody, you know, who walks in the door and be able to meet their needs right then and be able to make sure that they get what they need. Because two days they would be here and two days or three days they would be over in another county. So what we've done since that report came out, and I think that one hit the press about December. Right. We have actually started hiring and have filled the front office positions for every county. So there you have accessibility for that person who's walking in. We have increased our staff in our smaller counties. And we still have some more work to do, but we have started to increase those, the staff, our clinical staff in those counties. And we, you know, with COVID funding initially going into the first year of COVID, we received monies for telehealth. And so we've incorporated telehealth in those services as well.
Okay, I, I was just curious, you know, money seems to be a huge issue here.
And overhead, and when you, when you cover nine counties and you have so many, how many buildings? Fifteen, sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen buildings is a lot of overhead.
Uh, that's part where I was going with that. And then the other part, it seems like a lot of people probably migrate to Adams County anyway because.
From those smaller counties. Yes.
Fully are.
And so one of the things that we wanted to do is consolidate some of that other building over on Felte Street over by the crisis unit and put more services over there. So then we only have two buildings here in Adams County, one across the street over on Wall Street and the one over by the crisis unit on Jeff Davis.
If I may, Ms. Lewis, and also give you an answer to that question. There is a large disparity, in my opinion, in infrastructure and buildings throughout Region 11. It's my understanding that the legislature is in the process of making ARPA funds available to counties. We would ask Adams County to give consideration to providing potential funds for buildings to Region 11 so that infrastructure can be improved. The buildings, if you look across the state, they're 85% plus are either county owned or owned by CMHC foundations. Region 11 does have a foundation. I can't tell you exactly who the buildings are owned by in Adams County, but if the county would give consideration to, you know, putting some of those ARPA funds to use for buildings to provide mental health services in, that would be very beneficial to Region 11.
I, I mean, I'm glad you brought that up because I, I can't do nothing about what's going on in these other counties, but if every county, because all of us got those funds, if every county could use some of those funds to just bring us up to where we need to be, I mean, that's a quick fix right there.
The, the mental health services in a lot of surrounding counties provided in Adams County or, or, you know, our observation, Region 11 is very deficient in the number of employees that they have. They might have a person located in Adams County and they're in Adams County one or two days a week and they're, they're providing services in other counties, other days of the week. So if you ask yourself, you know, number of mentally ill persons in Adams County or any other county, and, and they're stretched very thin in, in their number of providers, people that can provide services and where they are. There are people providing services in Adams County. They're providing a different service in Pike County. Same, same thing, and I personally witnessed that along with Mr. Allen myself. And that's a, that's a bad problem to have.
Even if every county committed a mill, a full mill, that would solve your problem with funding.
If you look at the budget, the county contribution on average is about two to three percent of the CMHC budget. If you look at the Region 11 counties, they're kind of in the middle statewide. I can't tell you exactly on Adams, but I did tell you that overall it's about 300,000 and Adams County's providing 77,000 to Region 11.
It's hard to get qualified personnel when you can't even offer them health insurance.
Yeah, exactly.
And all of these problems, now like the commissioner said, all these problems are like, you don't have staff if you're.
Can't deal. Can't get the money.
Can't raise a mill mid, mid-year either. All right. So I think we have the committee to move forward. Anybody else got anything?
Mr. Allen, you have anything you want to say?
I'd just say, Ms. Lewis has my contact information. We have a lot of data from all over the, the state to compare to, to see actually where Region 11 is ranking among all others. So that would be a good place to, I may just have to sit down with you and go through some of that. Because that'll show a lot of areas and things that you could potentially improve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to appear today. And again, I'd ask the board to formally consider this. Our office's request to submit a plan to provide adequate mental health services within 30 days from today.
And there's no, there's no way we could have longer than 30 days. We all have long, it's 30 days. Just like a short period of time today.
He, he the one coming, he'd say 30 days. Couldn't be an extension on 30 days?
Possibly, but you know, I think, given the, the length of time that we've looked at that, the situation here, the time we visited Ms. Vance, I think the needs are, are apparent. I think she probably has an idea right now.
Yeah.
Can we go ahead though and ask for 45 just to?
Yeah.
Give us that little bit of extra window so that we have more time to meet.
Let's, let's see where we are.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's because I was, I was going, basically asked the same thing because we have just came up and today, and I know she's aware of it, and we are just coming, got two more people coming up to speed with it. If it's possible that, you know, if you would just think about considering maybe giving us another 15 days for to come up with your asking plan.
That, that's, if the board needs 45 days, that's fine. But I would ask in that if, if there could be.
Updates.
Communication.
Yes, right.
And updates, because like I said, I think that the people that have been involved in the situation understand where we're at. And I think the needs are apparent. This region is comparatively, just very frankly speaking, is far behind the other 11 region or the other 12 regions. And we just want to do what we can to make services better.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
On our team, I'm going to also, the two of my staff that's with me today, Margot Brooks is our administrative services director and she writes our federal grants. And Tracy Alexander Boyd is our clinical, Boyd is our clinical director. They'll also be giving input as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And Sandra, you're more than welcome to join anytime.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Real quick, we have Mr. Toby Sanford online. If you want, yeah, three minutes, we're moving quick. Are you available?
Yes, sir, I am here. I get y'all had some questions for me, or I can just jump right into price. I'm sure that's what you were asking about in the first place. We're more than capable of doing Adams County's redistricting.
Yeah, hey Toby, this is Scott Slouber. Thanks for, for jumping on the call. And I think Wes and I, and I know that a couple of supervisors too, wanted you just to kind of introduce yourself. You are a planning and development district and, you know, you, you've offered redistricting services to other counties. And I was just, you know, really interested, and I know the board was interested in just introducing yourself and so forth. And if they had questions, you know, go right ahead.
My name is Toby Sanford. I'm the GIS manager for the Golden Triangle Planning and Development District. I've been here going on 20 years. I think this article will be 19, next article will be 20. We are doing redistricting outside of our district, the, other than the seven counties that I cover. And that's just because maybe the planning and development district you're under at this time just doesn't have the capability of doing it or they're overloaded. So we, we did Wilkinson County and that was a good experience. I think they enjoyed it. I think they gave us a pretty good recommendation. And I did a bunch of redistricting 10 years ago. And this redistricting, we're pushing about 25. I've already finished 15, so we, we got about 10 active right now, somewhere in there. 15 I've already got done and behind them. Y'all have any questions for me or?
Yeah, and then you're, I think you estimated your price to, to see if we needed it or not? Do you have a cost for that?
Yes, sir. Y'all fall in as your population. Your 2020 census population was 29,538. Y'all lost about 2,759 people in those 10 years. And that falls into my $15,000 range. There is, there would be travel not to exceed $1,200. So it, it, travel might only be 70,000 times that's country.
Okay.
Did you travel?
Oh, is travel not to exceed $1,200?
Yes, you're looking on the 17,000.
Is it 15,000?
Um, generally Wilkinson County.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Wilkinson County.
Go ahead.
Just, just as close to what y'all are, you'd be about the same amount of time for me to get there. I think theirs was about. Just just as a close to what y'all are, you'd give that same amount of time for me to get there. I think theirs was about. Two fifty and that was a hotel room. We we came and we stayed the night before their board meetings, um, just because y'all are about. Almost four hours from me. Yeah, some things we can do on Zoom calls, um, go to meetings where I can figure on my computer and. We can redistrict all day long with y'all seeing the map, moving blocks around, um, just one census block into another district and you get live up there. See exactly what it does.
Is anybody have any questions for Mr. Sanford?
Y'all, anyone else have it, you know?
I need some copies of the old, I need a copy of the old man.
You need what?
Copy of the old, copy of the old man.
A copy of the old, like the old, uh, the ones that are presently? Okay, um, I guess Brady has all those.
I would also, I would have a copy of that map. I should have a copy of the present map.
I'd say I need.
Yeah, I think there's. But y'all want to?
How you doing, sir?
Yeah.
But but let me say, President.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me say this about those triage. Um, when I was in Washington, I did talk to a few supervisors about Golden Triangle. And they said he really did do a great job and um, I feel like they need to be that style county own though. Because I'm up for the one county and they were very impressed with them.
And I think the price is extremely good. So.
Well, I'm I'm gonna say this, uh, I'm not lobbying for one person, uh, uh, company over another. My only concern is. Uh, I'm not lobbying for the cheapest price. I'm lobbying for somebody that's gonna be open, honest and fair. And and is gonna redistrict us fair. So there's a lot of politics going into redistricting. I just want whoever we uh. Pick to uh do our, to redraw our lines, they take fair. That's how my concern is. I'm not worried about whether they cheap or not. I just want them to be fair.
Yeah, and when I talked to the county administrator, he communicated that this district, when it came to having to move lines. Be this group, uh, made sure that the supervisors were extremely involved in that process. And I think that's, I mean, the lines fall under your jurisdiction, your determination. So. I think that's the way it needs to go and and ultimately you need to be the ones that make sure that it's fair. So I think that again, they've. They got good good review from from the administrator who I think very, very highly of, very, he's far smarter than I am. So, you know. Uh, yeah, that's Wilkinson County.
Yeah, and I think we'll wait to re uh, we'll approve this uh, their lines. It's pretty up to us to approve those lines. Am I correct?
Yep.
Should be there and brought some possibly to each supervisor to, you know, approve their line.
You gonna be approving a plan. You gonna be approving the plan. Yeah, we don't prove each district. We just approve the overall plan.
Yeah, that's that's correct. We'll approve this, but we'll be satisfied with what the line, how the line is wrong.
Right.
So if we. Like to move forward and get going on our districting, districting, I mean, it's something we really need to.
Okay, then first after determine whether they do or that they already decided that.
No, they got determined.
They gotta determine it, but it's.
We gotta, we gotta move forward with that, don't they?
They gotta determine, but more than likely gonna need to redistrict and you can look at your fallout and you and you. If you can see there's a ten percent differential between your highest and your lowest, then that's a problem. So.
Which has got to be determined. Got to get somebody.
I would get started.
And that's what he's, that's what we need to do is to get somebody that's.
So we see a motion to get them started?
No, no, we got, I don't know.
Is that?
Get who started?
Get this guy started.
Determine whether uh, we gonna need to redistrict or not. I said I was, I know we had two here, so.
What's that?
I I just came back in on that. I said you had two of them here. So what you doing? You thinking that you gonna use this guy? I mean, take me up to speed.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm asking the board, at one point we need to make a determination of our lines. We don't need really wait. This group is, it's a public, private, public organization. So it's not like this one, that's a consultant, whatever. The county below us, who I think I felt very highly of, the the county administrator, we gave a recommendation. And and Supervisor Hutchins said that she also talked to some supervisors and they also uh have recommended this this group. So I'm asking this group's. I think pretty economically, uh, I think it's a very competitive price. So to me, I don't see, oh, if we can go ahead and get them started and and go from there. One of the things that, one of the concerns that Supervisor Gray had, and I agree with him, you don't, we don't want this to be some sort of political fiasco. And that was what, I didn't ask David, he he straight up said, when they had issues with their borders, this group got to supervisors that, you know. The two in particular, you talked to them, got it, made sure that they were kind of mediated out and everything's good and they approved it. He said it was a very painless process and. It just stood very highly of them. So I'm asking, I think the board, you know, needs to make a determination one way or the other. I don't know anything about slaughter.
They may be great.
I I know and I was on the road when they uh redistricted. They did a great job. Uh, I mean. They wasn't too political. I mean, they actually moved the numbers where they moved the lines where they supposedly been moved and gave us an opportunity to look at them and we weren't satisfied. All of the way up, we're satisfied and had to tweak them and move them some more. So I I'm not, I mean. We looking at price and everybody had a bit uh Golden Triangle. I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem eating well. I'm I'm just ready to get on with the redistrict.
That's what I'm saying too. Ricky, I don't have a problem. Obviously, I'm on the bottom of the hunt. This seems like a good group. But we do need to make a decision quickly. My, you know, if we could punt it down the road again, that's just not something we need to do. We need to get our our borders. Uh, our district lines, I'm sorry. We need to get them approved and.
I I understand what you're saying. What kind of price did the other have? Did you just ask?
They did not give a flat rate. They had an hourly rate, two hundred dollars an hour, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, a hundred an hour, seventy-five an hour. You know.
And you just don't know how many hours it's been on though.
Correct, we some hours, I agree with that.
So if you don't have a price.
Versus this is a flat rate of, you know, fifteen thousand plus twelve hundred of.
Alright, go with the flat rate. What's the bizarre report? I I I mean, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to be gone on the other thing. You have a motion by Supervisor Gray to.
I second it.
Yeah, seconded by Supervisor Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out. Toby, you following?
Yeah, yeah, sir. I think I followed. I think y'all just hired me. That's why.
We did.
Alright, um, Scott, I will give you a contract. Um, I'll send it here in just a few minutes. And all we need to do is get a signature on it and send it back. I'll also have a set of criteria that we will use in redistricting. It's just seven little things like, um, we will have public hearings. We will, um, keep districts as continuous as possible. We will not district out a sitting supervisor. And then I'll have a list of things that I need to proceed, like maps. I need the supervisor map. The justice court map and a list of all the elected officials and addresses so that I make sure that I do not district out. A sitting board member out of the district they live in.
Thank you, sir.
We did it, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hey.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Toby.
Bye-bye.
I just uh paid, uh, excuse me, that you said you can give us a map, a current map. So, you know, if you're entertained, if we can't get a current map, let me know. And I'll stop by, pick it up. I want I want current map or whatnot.
Well, when we get ready to go into executive, I want to open the chat.
Okay, alright.
And GeoPortals two, there should be, I remember we had that fiasco. GeoPortal should have accurate trail maps as well.
Alright, uh, we'll go back to Mr. Fred Parker.
Good morning. Morning. In this package you're about to receive, uh, there's a couple of things. Uh, the first thing I'd like to go over is the Adams County Dental Review. Which provides us with the help. Uh, and once everybody's got their little packet. And with me today, I have Mr. Pete Hawkins, president of sales at Blue Cross Blue Shield and Jewel McCollum, executive vice president from United Health. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yep.
Keep the light down.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. Oh, I didn't know that was great.
Oh, Lord. Uh, in this packet, if y'all would take a moment to look at the Adams County Board of Supervisors Dental Review. Right now, the dental plan's been with United Healthcare for two years. I received a, we had a two-year lock on the rates. Uh, the current rate is going up uh for an employee, one dollar and sixty cents. Employee and spouse, three dollars and twenty cents. Employee and children, three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Employee and family, five dollars and thirty-one cents a month. I got a uh, a proposal from a group called The Standard, which is an A-plus rated company. Uh, the benefit structure is essentially the same. Uh, and if we move to The Standard, the employee rate, the difference between. United Healthcare and uh Standard will be three dollars, employee and spouse, five dollars and eighty-five cents. Employee and children, six dollars and nineteen cents, employee and family, nine seventy-one. Uh, the the main difference I could tell you about the two plans is that of all the plans that I use. When I write group down. The group, you have rollover amounts. In other words, if an employee gets their their cleanings done. They've been on the plan a couple of years, then two thousand dollar maximum is increased. With the current plan, there's sixty-six people that have anywhere from two thousand two hundred and fifty to two thousand five hundred in benefit. As opposed to two thousand dollars because they've been on the plan two years and they haven't had anything major going dental wise. Uh, I did a poll of sorts. I called uh some of the department heads. I've talked to different employees. Made some phone calls because this is not my money that's getting spent. This is the employees' money they're spending. Uh, I would say in general, most employees felt like, most of the employees I talked to. Felt like they were comfortable with United Healthcare, that their uh service had been good, they were happy with it. Of course, I did have a couple of people say, I don't want my rate to go up. Both companies are A-plus rated companies, good companies. And. I would say either plan would be great. Uh, because we, I had, I've had one problem with United Healthcare. That was because a local dentist. Uh, a employee went to the dentist for some major work and the dentist did not send in a predetermination form. Detailing what was going to be done. And the dentalist dentist office said, oh, you'll, they'll pay up to two thousand dollars. Well, the dental plan paid only four hundred and fifty because, and it was kind of on the dentist. Because they didn't send in exactly what was gonna be done. Other than that, I've had no problems.
So so let me stop you right there for a minute.
Yes.
When when you have a situation like that and the dentist tells you one thing and then some, you get a bill for something else and what happened?
Uh, I advised this employee that they should, uh, I I spoke with my dentist office. And I went to my dental office and I said. How can this happen? And she said, I don't know. She said, any dental service over three hundred dollars, our office sends in a predetermination. She said, because if we tell somebody it's gonna be X and we don't send it in a predetermination. And it's why we can get stuck with that, which I assume that means that the person was told one thing. And then they got a bill for another and they refused to pay it. Which was my advice to this employee.
So, uh, we looking at. We looking at thirty-five, forty versus thirty-two, forty-seven, seventy, seventy-two versus sixty-four, eighty-seven. Seventy-four, eighty-seven versus sixty-eight, sixty-eight and one seventeen versus, one seventeen, forty-five versus one oh seven, seventy-four.
That's correct.
And you saying that you did a polling and the majority of employees wanna. Uh, they like United Health, but some of them didn't wanna pay extra.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you say both of them.
A plus.
Is A plus?
Yes, sir.
So if we decided to go with something different, uh, is it a time limit before you would go to the dentist or it it take effect immediately?
Great question. There's no, no waiting periods whatsoever.
So if that's the case, then why wouldn't we go with the lower one?
I'm sorry?
I say if that's the case, why wouldn't we go with standard and shine instead of keeping United Health? Now, in the past, you know, we 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 kind of stuck on names that we familiar with.
Yes, sir.
But sometimes a name don't have a good game either. So.
I understand.
My thing is, if it's gonna save the employees a little money and you're gonna get the same service. Why would we stick with United Health and its more?
The the only reason is that, and I could not, due to HIPAA laws, find out exactly what employee it would be. But some employees, if they had a, let's say, a denture put in, a root canal or an implant, instead of a two thousand dollars benefit. Since we're, if we stay with United Healthcare, they might have a twenty-five hundred dollar benefit. But I don't know who they are. So. Uh, that's the only reason. And there's no way for me to know who would actually get the greater benefit.
What what is the deductible different or are they the same?
They're the same. Uh, there's there's no deductible for preventive services with The Standard, uh, as is with United Healthcare.
The only thing is with United, we've got a track record, right? On The Standard, do you have any?
Uh, the city of Natchez had The Standard and uh, what I'd do when it comes to dental plans. Uh, and with any other plan, before I suggest it, I call a few dentists and say, have you had any problems or experience and they're all, they said. The last person I talked to said, Fred Parker, if it's an A-plus rated company and they have zero deductible on their preventive benefits. And they pay a hundred percent on preventive, eighty on basic and fifty on major benefits, we really don't have a problem. So.
The next question is this, did you do a survey of of the dentists in the area?
Right.
Find out, do they accept standards?
Okay, that's very good. And and fourth question, yes, they will all accept it. But here's the problem. No dentist in the city of Natchez, oh my, very few of them join dental networks. For instance, the Blue Cross Network. Every doctor in the state is in the Blue Cross Network. I I went to my dentist one day and I said, why don't you join this dental network? And I can send you people. I can like say, hey, he's in this network. He said, Fred, I have enough customers. I don't need to take a discount for my services. So virtually, they all accept it. But you don't, none of them are in a network. In fact, to elaborate one one more time, you can go right now to United Healthcare website, get your card out. And find a dentist that is in network. Usually it's gonna be in Jackson or Alexandria or Shreveport. Uh, very few of the dentists here join any networks. So.
Last question. I know I got a lot of questions, but this is.
Well, doesn't there?
I promise you, uh, just say for instance Supervisor Wilson got somebody that's. Just say for instance Supervisor Wilson got somebody, a young kid. I'm going to use myself. I'm sorry Supervisor. Say I got a child and my child live in Maryland. Is Standard Insurance in Maryland?
Yes, sir. They're nationwide.
Okay. I'm done with the question.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
So, if someone will make a motion, it's the which one that we, y'all feel like y'all are going with?
I'm kind of in the ideal state with United because we have a track record with them. He called around and asked about them and I hadn't heard any complaints. I don't know if anybody else has from any of the employees. Robbie, did he?
Oh, I'm in the middle of having some stuff going down. So, my question was, does the other one going to take that up?
They would have to. However, I know how you feel.
People, me, I don't really have, either one of them do need, but...
Are either one of these raised for a lock-in for more than a year?
Thank you.
Good question.
Standard is locked, will lock in for two years. United Healthcare is one year. And what I feel like is, if we stay with United Healthcare, next year, their rates are going to go up again and we will have to move to next year.
Okay.
Well, you already answered it.
You solved that problem?
Yeah.
I know that we accept Standard Insurance, well, generally.
Got a motion by Supervisor Greg. Give me a second. Second, by Supervisor Dan. Any discussion?
Okay, thank you all.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Next on the agenda, I'm going to have Mr. Pete Hawkins speak to y'all briefly. And about Blue Cross, what's happening there. And Mr. Lacoste will talk to you. We actually have a little good news.
Thank you all for your time. Just want to be really brief this morning, this afternoon, visit about where you are from a healthcare perspective. Last year, when we talk about healthcare costs, it's important because remember, you're a self-funded plant. The costs of the plant are yours or the county's. So, it's very important to track where you're at. Last year, we had a very high increase in claim costs. Last year, right around the 30% range in cost, claim dollars. As we rolled into the next 12-month period of time, which is the current period of time that you're in today, we're seeing that continue, not quite as a rate. Still, you're about 20% plus increase in cost from over the last 12-month period of time. So, what you're seeing is a large number of what we call shop claimants. These are your largest claims on the planet. In other words, 20 members on the planet can make up as much as 80% of the cost of the plant. And that is very common as your large claims. That's where we're at. And really, the nice thing about that is, is you've got a very strong network with the Blue Cross system. That's not only from Mississippi, but nationwide. But you're also engaged with a very strong reinsurer in Unity Re, and that's Mr. Jules Lacoste. And those large claims that we speak of annually, through Fred's guidance, is that the reinsurance becomes that really important mechanism. So, Jules is a partner with many folks throughout the state. He's been doing that for years. I'm going to turn it over to him and let him explain on the reinsurance side, which today is probably the most important mechanism that you have in place for that large loss protection. So, question, Mr. Gray?
I know you don't have this right off, but you know, y'all always say it's a 20% increase. I'd like to know a dollar amount when we come talking about increase. I'd like to know the dollar amount that we paying more than we paid last time.
You talking about the claims volume?
Right.
This isn't cost to you, this is actual dollars. If you're talking about from a dollar perspective, it's a... Okay. Well, this is on a, yeah, this is on a plan payments per summary. So, if you look at a member, when you look at the members on the actual plan, you have, and a member cannot only be an employee, but this is actually a dependent at home as well. You have 308 members on the plan. So, what we look at, if we look at it from a PMPMS, per member, per month basis, and cost increase. So, let's go back three years. Three years ago, you were at $350 per member per month. So, what you do, you take your monthly claim costs or your annualized claim costs and you divert that into, divert that into actually the spend. So, you were at $350 per member per month. Last year, that moved to $476 per member per month. So, that's that 30-plus percent increase that I represented. This year, you're at $580 per member per month. That's that 20% plus. So, you've gone from $350 per member per month in claim spend to $476 per member per month, now up to $580 per member per month. So, the way you look at that is, that's your claims cost spend. You still have your fixed costs, you still have your Blue Cross administrative fees, you have the reinsurance fees associated with that. But that's what you're spending in claim costs. That's not the charges. The charges, a doctor may charge $100 for their services, but based on the network discount, we may only reimburse $50. So, those actual payments that we discussed, that $500 per member per month is actually your total. Yeah, that's a net number. But when you look at the total spend of the total population for the last 12 months, it's $2,288,000. And again, 80% of that spend came from 20 members on the plan. Any other question we can answer for you?
I know you don't have no way of knowing this, but you know, the last three years, that trend is going up.
Yes, sir.
Our job is we got to get our people more healthy and where that trend can kind of go back down.
That's right.
Thank you.
Jules?
Hi. Guys, thank you all so much for having me. It's great to see everyone. I think you'll be happy with this renewal. Obviously, we have seen, like Pete has illustrated, an increase in overall exposure. Not only in the average claim cost per individual, but the number of what I would view as ongoing risk. And you have a ton of those ongoing risks. But since, you know, I've been doing business with y'all for such a long time, we understand how, when you think of costs of things now, everything is very challenging. So, we were trying to find a way, what can we do to try to keep your costs down? We made a decision to, on a fixed cost standpoint, we're not going to have any increase at all. We're going to hold your current rates. We're going to hold your current rates. That is your specific single family rate. We're also going to hold your aggregate rate. The fixed costs, that's what you would pay every month. And remember, the costs of your program are fixed costs, like Pete was saying, which would be your stop-loss protection plus your admin fees. That'd be your total fixed cost, then plus claims. The other thing we decided to do is, we looked at your ongoing risk. There are numerous members there. We also were able, when we looked at the overall laser risk, we actually were able to have an overall reduction over $10,000 in that as well. The only part that is a slight increase, and it directly was impacted by the average claim costs, what Pete just went over with y'all. And that is your soft dollar aggregate factors. They have gone up slightly. And if you look at this page right here, it will show you the actual differences in factors. And for example, I'll go with this. Last year, your factors were 454, 53 single, and 1274 of 66 family. Those factors have increased to 50310 and 1,08685. And what that represents is what we call, when you take those two factors, multiply by the number of individuals in each category, times 12, you would have what we call an attachment point. If your cumulative claims, net paid claims, would exceed that attachment point, then we would reimburse back to up to a million dollars. In my 37, 38 years of doing this, I've never had an aggregate in. It's more sleep medicine. You should never ever have to use this, but if things get really bad, you have that protection. But that's the only increase, and it's a soft dollar increase. It doesn't really cost you anything. The only thing it costs you is the $3.81 per covered person per month. And that rate is the same as what you're paying this year. So, we think this is a really good renewal for y'all. We're trying to keep the costs down as best we can. But you do have many ongoing situations. And there are three or four individuals that we know are going to exceed the deductible next year that we are accepting after the deductible. So, we know we're going to pay claims on those people. And we try to keep this as aggressive as we can to help y'all definitely in a very challenging time. Any specific questions that I can go over?
Any questions for the board?
I'd just like to say, we appreciate you. Y'all are working so hard to try to, you know, save those money and keep our costs down. I obviously, I definitely appreciate it.
It's my pleasure. We are very, thank you for letting us be a part of it, y'all. And that's one of the things, we are such a great team here. We're always going to have you back. We're always going to try to look for ways of saving you money if we can. And you know, we are so blessed also that our partner is Blue Cross and their networks, it helps us. I mean, their average discount, 60, almost 70%. You know, could you imagine if we didn't have that? The cost would be that much more. So, I'm very grateful for that partnership as well. And I'm very grateful to be able to be here for you. So, I thank y'all very much.
Thank you all.
Any questions?
Thank you. One last thing is that, you know, when we had the executive meeting recently, and Kevin specifically said, "So, you're softening this up." And when I was looking at those claims that we had, I certainly had no idea that Jules could come back in at the same rate on the reinsurance and the active insurance that he did last year. So, I was precipitous with that. And, you know, going forward, I hope that we can improve this plan and keep it rolling. And hopefully, I can get in these meetings at the open enrollment, I can encourage employees to go get their health renewed, which, if you look at the numbers there, they're not too happy in terms of how many people are going. Of course, we know, all know, you can read daily that a lot of that's due to COVID. But some of that's kind of clearing up. And at the open enrollment, I will definitely be going around to the employees and encouraging them to go ahead, go to the doctor. And you know, men hate colonoscopies, but I'll be trying to encourage those guys 50 and over to go ahead and take care of that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to the partner reports. I think we have Mr. Ford and Charlotte.
Mr. President? Are we going to move to go ahead and keep the people we got? Or we just bunch them?
Motion by Supervisor Greg, second by Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you all.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Thank you very much, guys.
Y'all take care.
Thank you. It's great for the city. Take care.
Please stay safe.
I got two items I will leave the board approval on. First one is, good morning, board. And then, we received a contract back from Camo Construction for the 26th year Kenny Heights project. We have a question of board authorization of our board president to execute the contract so we can set up a pre-plant for that project.
You heard the request?
Oh.
Motion by Supervisor Dan, second by Supervisor Greg. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
If you will send something, I won't. Pretty out.
Pretty out? Yeah. Second one is, while I was at water, we now were asked to develop a program form for restructuring Liberty Road from Cedar Lynch to Cranfield Road, Cranfield Road and North Palestine Road. We prepared that program form underneath the board's authorization to allow us to submit that. That would require us to get signatures from each board member and of course myself.
You heard your request? Motion by Supervisor Hutchins, second by Supervisor Dan. Any discussion?
So, what are we doing? Taking a...
We're developing, developing a program form to strike those three roads. I'm going to say eight one.
You just developing it right now? We don't have a price.
No, no.
Okay.
Well, I look the price out, we're making it 24, 47 miles. And estimate right now for design is $299,777.81. And of course, they're just a preliminary estimate, we're not designing it.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
And just wait and get the high-dollar report back for the Burke Road project. Get, get the approved program form. We're going to submit the high-dollar report. We just give them the report, the approval back from the report to move forward with the design. And bid opening for the SAP 1 Eaton Hallam, which is the striking project for Pine Ridge, Fossum Mountain Steam Plant. The bid opening for that will be Monday, March 21st. And also on that date, we will have a bid opening for the EWP's Route 4, which is Prince Edition Equipment Road, Mysterio Lane, Liberty Road, South Palestine Road and Lansdowne Road. We have a bid opening for those projects as well.
No question.
Only thing, only thing that relates to the EWP's 16 Prince Edition, that was that work that needed to be done by the homeowner before they would allow us to...
They still haven't done? When is the time limit on that?
Time limit on what?
For them to get their work done where?
We're, that project, because of the deadline, we're going to bid opening on 22. We expect that all documents are ready to start construction by April the 18th. That's what we put in our title, the real winner contract has to be ready to move by April 18th.
Okay.
That's all I have. If y'all have any questions? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ford. I get you all the time.
You're up.
Okay, all right. First thing I need to do is pass this to you, Mr. President, so you can sign this for the trash, so that we can reembrace it for those pickups. And the next thing I want to do is, I want to keep you all informed of what's going on with the sheriff office. So, Supervisor Gray, I'm actually taking one and passing it around. And I'll tell you why I'm giving you all that for it.
You heard the request, the sheriff, taking a motion, signing this trash report, we'll re-embrace it.
Oh.
Second, motion by Supervisor Dan, second by Supervisor Greg. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
I think I actually gave you the, on the back end, I think I actually gave you the trash, the report. And the reason why I reported it slightly down is because we've had a lot of requests from the community for help. Like next to this building over here, they had all that gymnastics equipment and all that stuff in it that the city had, I think they were the building college, right next to the Reagan building over there. You know, the March gym and all that, we were hoping to help the musical festival people move all that stuff out. And we had a couple of other projects that we had to do. But the reason why I passed that around to you all is I wanted you all to look at this and just explain some things because I know on our budget, overtime is lumped in or salary. I just want to give you all a visual of what's been going on over the last couple of months. And as you see, y'all, over the last couple of months, since October, we've had to spend like 576 hours to cover 48 shifts. And if you look down there, I gave the explanation of why. You know, everywhere we had three people out on shift because of COVID, baby league and, or baby league even had... baby league and, uh, or baby league even had to cover five days, three people, twelve hours. I really want the board to understand what's coming from all this. Uh, then you keep going down, we had three deputies going off to K nine school to get their research. But the biggest number I wanted the board to, to look at, um, and that's, those three deputies, we had to cover their shifts, you know, as you can see, two people a week. And then the biggest number I want you all to see was the twenty-two employees out with COVID since December and three out because of multiple surgeries. And so, it's kind of hard for us to disciple of what, because like I say, it's all lumped in. If I want to give you all a report, let you all know that you see overtime, this is the reason why. Now, if you look at the corner, you should see a number over there. This does not include, include seatbelt rent. Now, that thirteen thousand, seven oh eight that you see in that corner over there, that is money that we have reimbursed on seatbelt rent. So, I just wanted you all to know that just in case you all have some questions or concerns or anything about overtime. And right now, we're at seventy employees right now, when we slide up to seventy-seven. So, I do have some more things to bring forward. I also wanted you all to know this. I know, I told you all last meeting about the new computer, computer for RINs lab that we have down here at Sheriff's Office, and a lot of your state agencies don't even have the equipment that we have in our sheriff's office and matches. Now, the fact that AG's office is just getting the very equipment that we use grant funds to purchase. But I did want you all, I did want you all to know that Friday, we signed another partnership with the Secret Service as well. And one of the things that we're gonna be pushing forward with that partnership with the Secret Service is investigating fraud. You know, they have such a large threshold, threshold on the federal level that you have to meet in order to go after some of these scammers and, and, and these people who are scamming people using bitcoins and all these things to make. Well, with the partnership that we formed with the, the MOU we put in place with the Secret Service, that just kind of sheriff's offices now on their task force with the Secret Service. What that means is more access to grant funding to help investigate fraud on a local level. And it also means that we have access to whatever equipment, whatever, uh, computer tools, whatever lab they have. We can actually go to those labs and they're trying to get bases put all over, uh, the state and the country. And right now, board, they're doing slowly, Mississippi's ranked eleventh, and we're part of that. So, I wanted you all to know that.
One, one, one question. With, with all what you just said with the Secret Service and all that, is it gonna cost us anymore?
Not gonna cost you a dime.
Thank you.
Not gonna cost you a dime. Matter of fact, matter of fact, just so you'll know, that in the agreement that we have with them, uh, if a case come up and they need our assistance on it, they gonna actually pay all the overtime for it. It's all, it's not costing us a thing. It's actually a plus for us because we have access to tools that we didn't have access before. And they'll pay for the training for our people. And if they go to training where specialized equipment, if they're retrained on specialized equipment, we actually will get that equipment put here at Sheriff's Office and actually be able to use. So, it's a, it's a win-win for us all the way around. Uh, I do have one you hired that I wanted you to bring aboard. As you all know, Charlotte's there, and Charlotte is now gone. So, what I did was I moved young Nick into Charlotte's position, but I wanted to hire somebody else back, uh, to put on, put on staff. And I'm asking to hire Erica James. Let me find her paperwork here. Do you have it up there?
I do.
You have it?
Probably kept the license option.
Yes.
And then?
Yes.
Sixteen fifty hours?
Yes. All right.
Annual rate, thirty-four, three twenty. So, this is an open position, correct?
Yes, and it was, it was listed with Charlotte's, like.
Um, you got, I have another new hire here as well. No, don't.
No.
That's, no, that's not you.
Yeah, he's just wanting me.
Sixteen, what? Sixteen fifty. I mean, uh, sixteen fifty, annual rate thirty-four, rate twenty. You heard the request, the sheriff, can we get a motion?
Sir.
Motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
All right. Now, I have one that has moved in from jail to the streets. Uh, Deputy Alicia Wimber has been assigned to, to the schools now. And we moved, uh, to sell babies, mobile back to the streets. And so, I need another female officer, plus we had to slide over. So, I'm, I'm asking for a pay change on the Heira, the Heera, the Huria, I'm sorry, Virgin to sixteen oh one, which is starting to settle for that.
I don't have that.
You don't?
All I've got is a pay change for Robert Moore.
Okay, that's it? You don't have the rest of these? You don't have any of these from? Any of these from the jail that just came out probation or anything? All right, guess I'll give you another day here.
Only other one I got is Deputy Burton, and I think that's gonna be there.
You don't?
Better not of this far.
Got it. That's what they're not told, I mean, I signed.
What, what about the one you just said?
Yeah, Robert Moore was on the other one I had, other day. I did ask for a pay change, I mean, uh.
From?
No, it was a, it was an increase, yeah. It was from, I think sixteen eighty-three to seventeen ninety-one. He's got over twenty-something people in him. And I don't have any sarge or anything, I'm, I'm short two sarge as well, so, yes.
So, you moving him up to?
Seventeen ninety-one.
Well, that's a different position.
No.
So, where is he getting the increase?
He's getting the increase because I increased his workload tremendously. And he's not just doing therapy anymore, he's serving papers. I got him in the course, I got him working with Enterprise, I got him working, I actually got him working in Florida right now. And so, I need to compensate for it.
So, the open sergeant positions that you have, you, you won't be filling those?
I don't have any to fill that at this time, I know I don't. I'm not saying I want a year from now, but at the right now, no. He's not going up to sergeant pay, that's not sergeant pay. That's actually corporate pay, which is what we try to pay anybody who had more than five years at Sheriff's Office. If you have more than five years, that's what we try to pay our people to keep. We, you know, we have thousands of white people with all surrounding agencies. Right now, we're, we're whole of A, everybody that surrounds us.
You heard the request, the sheriff, though.
Trying to keep you free. So.
Second, motion by Supervisor Dan, second by Supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Thank you all.
Which one? You need something again? Well, that's right. Which one?
You talking about the jails? Yeah. It was supposed to be something, basically what happened with the jails is when they come out, their probation area period, they get that three percent, like, get rid of the jails they got, and that's what I was gonna ask over there. They not signing. You know how in the past, after they come out, their probation area period, they always come to the, the, the saddle of the regular jails? That's, that's all that goes.
I don't remember, I don't remember nothing like that.
All right, but we've been doing it six years. Six years.
Sheriff, is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Uh, I do have, Sheriff, are you on one? I've got a new hire, Deputy Clark. Board, have you all handled that? But, but, De, Deputy Clark.
Is anybody, right?
Is anybody, they, they definitely, my last time, because of the thing he was in when they were fussing about not getting a raise. So, if he needed his first, I suggest we go ahead and ask first.
You got paperwork, huh?
Paywork, sign thirteen dollars an hour, annual rate twenty-seven zero four.
Oh.
Motion by Supervisor Dan, second by Supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out. Ms. Madison, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to just touch base and just, um, see when we're gonna get together. I'll have to wait and give the Scott, he had to go out to court. So, I'll check with him when he gets, um, he gets that court today.
That's right, you can come here.
Okay, that's right.
Thank y'all for money.
Excuse me, um, Mr. President. Any other questions for, for James or for you?
No, ma'am, I have not got there yet.
Okay, bye.
Oh, any public comments? Public comments? All right, come to the table, Supervisor Gray.
Just a second, Mr. President. Uh, I did attend, uh, NACO in Washington, DC, and, uh, found my paperwork back, but made a long story short, um, I did get a kind of administrative copy of the, uh, the overview of the US Treasury, excuse me, final ruling for ARPA physical recovery year. Uh, and when I went through that book, I found out a lot of this stuff, like homelessness, housing problem, poverty, uh, just missing those three is the same thing that the NAACP came down and gave us a, uh, and gave us a list paperwork on. So, uh, we got other individuals in the community, like Watkins Street Cemetery. In another letter that I have, uh, I think if, if, if all of them, uh, work under that branch, we can just definitely gonna deal with it, we can just deal with that in one little, then just deal with the NAACP with poverty and homelessness and housing issues that we face in this community. Uh, did go to a class dealing with the candidacy. Uh, I mean, I guess it's a big problem to have, uh, we not into the, uh, recreation marijuana. We into the repre, I mean, we into the medical marijuana. And, uh, I couldn't believe what I was hearing that, uh, with the recreation marijuana, the banks don't accept that money. So, people start coming into, uh, the board's, the commissioner's office with a duffel bag full of money and say, "He was hook cut right here." Y'all counted. I thought that was crazy. So, they, they was trying to pass a law, uh, with the banks to, uh, get them to, uh, accept some of that money. But that's a good problem to have, I can tell you that, because with, with the recreational part, a lot of these money problems that we got in the county, we would be having these, these problems. Uh, do anybody have an update? Well, let me finish this Watkins DC deal. Uh, I, I also, I wasn't able to get but one of these. It's a breakdown of the federal infrastructure funding availability to comments. I think this is the one that, uh, President Biden signed a one-point treaty, dollars legislation. And I did talk to the airport director and Mr. Wild when they was here, they had some more grants on here. Uh, two of them, they say they already applied for, and one of the other ones, they in the process of applying for. So, I guess the airport is up to speed on these grants. But they have something with the port. Uh, I haven't talked to the port director. Uh, they have a, a competitive two-point, two-million-dollar grant for the port. Uh, is it a way we can make a copy? Because I wasn't able, they wasn't giving out the one of these. Y'all might already have, it might be online, but I like to look at mine, I scratch through. So, this is.
Hey, you better write something up, something like that.
I gave her a small paper right here, but I can give it to her and she can make a copy. But I think everybody need to, uh, have a copy of this, because they got a lot of grants in that, that we might be able to utilize. Uh, I'm gonna say this. I know in the last, well, this year, we had, I think we on our third killing. And it's all coming from pretty much young folks. And I always used to say that we have a person on our community that they need to be prayed out, but it's a little deeper than that. They need to be prayed out, but, uh, it's time that we, well, we gonna have to have a come-to-Jesus meeting with some of these individuals. And I mean, kids and parents or whatever the case may be. But one thing I will say, in the process of meeting with these parents and these kids, we can't stop pointing fingers and saying whose fault it is. We need to come up with a solution to the problem that we have. Because I got called last night, people telling me about people already pointing fingers and blaming the parents and blaming this and that. The blame game is gonna get us deep in a hole in what we in. We just need to get everybody together and come up with a solution to the problem we have. Uh, I haven't heard nothing about Martin Town Road. Have any of y'all heard anything about Martin Town Road? Because I know we had something in, in, uh, a bill up there. I don't know whether, whether we got it or not, but I would like, love to note. And like I said, uh, we do have that AA, that ARPA recovery fund and, uh, I think we gonna be able to use that money pretty much in kind of what we want to. Uh, once we get, uh, Scott, uh, and, uh, look old, and I think we might be able to use some of that money if we don't get that money from the state or the feds with Washington DC. Uh, where we at on time, you know I'm asking.
Well, I was gonna put that in my report. I did send an email out and I told about how many blocks we were gonna need. I called it, I texted, I emailed, and then I asked somebody to call me back. I haven't gotten an answer back. Maybe she's not moving. But I have submitted the amounts that we need.
And.
So, maybe she was off, I don't, you know, she might have been off.
I forgot to say this about this money. This, this money we getting, that, uh, ARPA money, I'm just doing supervisor. And I know for a fact, we gonna have to take care of Martin Town Road and a couple of other things that people done submitted to us. But one thing I learned up there, that money can be used to help these kids in this community. Some of these programs that, that, that we talked about that is not being funded, we gonna have to fund some of these programs, try to save some of these kids in this community. I, I, I don't, I don't see no other way. If the programs work, then we gonna have to find a way to use this money and fund some of these programs.
Can I say someone, what you said about these, you don't mind?
Uh, Supervisor Gray, I, I love the meeting you talking about. I kind of could tell in the end when I came back in, I was on, and, and that, let me say, that wasn't the way that panel was set up. You know, it, it, it ended, it was supposed to have been a police unit and kind of group from there. And it was a lot of people that got brought in. And the first thing I said in that meeting last night was this shouldn't be a tax on parents, it shouldn't be a tax on schools or anything else. It should be solution-oriented. And the one thing that I'm gonna say, we definitely need to use some funding to fund that program. But I, I told people last night that, that we gonna have a reinvent wheel on how to deal with what's going on here. It needs to, it needs to be a multifaceted approach, where you got everybody from the CEO to the journalists, to the, to the OGs in the streets. And the reality is, I met this guy out of town named Andre Moore. And he had done this in St. Booth, he had done this in Atlanta, and he had done this in a lot of places. If you've seen murder rates, you can drop. And the town, after he left, continued on and actually deal on what he showed them how to do. And they are thriving from it now. My suggestion is, I, I've been in touch with this guy, and he is willing to come to the matches, him and his team, at the end of March, either third or fourth. at the end of March, either the third or fourth week in March. And when I was gonna come to the board when I got his proposal sent brought up, I'm saying it now, to see if we can get some help, get this man here. Him and his team, because St. Louis is still the murder capital of the world, don't get me wrong. But when he been in there and did, and him and his team, and how he got everybody to the paperwork, there's no dick eye and little view, they got a twenty percent drop in the murder rates that you, and that's huge, because it gave people hope again. And when there's hope, people feel like there's a chance to actually save that room. I don't feel like NACIS is that far gone yet, but I do feel like it doesn't need to be me or any other individual tries to edit this up, because if you do, it's gonna get very political. And people gonna be sidetracked and on all these sidewalks, and they gonna forget what the common goal is. That's why I say, we should bring in the outsider, because and let him facilitate what these do happen here, so we can actually do something to save everybody. So I don't wanna say.
Uh, I mean, at this point, uh, whatever it takes, I ain't, we ain't necessarily need that, some need to help, cause we can't keep doing what we doing. And uh, uh, I I thought about since uh we we was under the ten million dollars and we could use that money in kind of way, I was wondering, could we take that money and replace that money back in our budget that we use for the match the EWP project? Cause that's a lot of money we always use to match EWP project. And uh, I saw where, I don't know, man, I wish I could get in touch with the dude, uh Netflix CEO and his wife made a ten million dollar donation to Tubaloo. Ten million dollars, I thought that was awesome. And uh, last, nah, not last, let me my 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 simply goes out to the Marx family, the Williams family, the Merrick family, the Collins family, the Banks family, the Rice family, the Griffin family, the Chandler family, the Lee family, the Jones family. And my 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 heart goes out to the young lady that lost her son over McComb in a drive by shooting in a park. Somebody just opened up in a dry daylight in a park and started shooting. That can get killed for like six years old or something like that. And uh, Mr. Peter, uh well, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, but he was a a teacher in NACIS High, and my simply goes out to his family. Now, the young man that got killed down from my shop, the Brown that got, uh he was a student at NACIS High. And it's amazing, Trayvon Washington got killed two or three days later in Alexandria, and he's a former student at NACIS High. So we had one to get killed in NACIS, and one to get killed in Alexandria. So uh if we got all this money, it's not gonna do no good to bring all of these jobs here and 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 we don't have no, no safety in this community, because I see it every day. I I see people walking up and down the street like it's the wild wild west. We 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 need to get a little tougher, and I know we got gun laws, but you can't do whatever, but I'm gonna read it, well, since we got the city attorney with, is taking Scott play. I was gonna talk to the mayor and the chief of police. I just don't understand how you can have a shooting, and then the next day you got people on the street like it's a parade going on, that they don't even live on that street. I I just need to make them move out and go anywhere they wanna go, cause in certain neighborhoods in this community, if you don't live over there, they call the police, and you got to go, so they need to go for every neighborhood around here, to try to keep everybody safe. And uh they they, we have uh, not we, but they have Southwest County having our uh annual meeting on uh, I think it's in April, you you're part of that supervisor gang, but uh
It's April, right?
April the what?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth to the twenty first, right?
That's correct.
Are you attending?
I am.
Okay, yeah, I can make a motion for that, but this is the event I wanna attend. It's the Empowerment Freedom Thirty-Sixth Annual Economic Development Conference in Tennessee, uh Memphis, Tennessee, so I'll be able to drive to Memphis, Tennessee on April the twentieth through the twenty fourth. And uh, me and Angela discussed that and just tried to figure out uh which one we was gonna go to, so uh, if y'all wanna go to uh Southwest County meeting, I think I'm gonna go to this housing conference up in Memphis, Tennessee. Uh, I'm I'm making a motion that Yes, ma'am.
I remember the great idea, because I think you have a lot of uh uh knowledge on that conference, you know, uh we were, we get talked about that, and I think if I make the justice a soft request, it would be great for you to go without.
Thank you, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to be allowed to attend this uh Economic and Freedom Thirty-Sixth Annual Conference Economic Development Conference, April the twenty, the twenty fourth in uh Memphis, Tennessee.
Second, motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Nah, I'm gonna make this motion for, if you on Southwest County Board too.
Cause I am.
Okay, uh, uh, so you and Angela should attend that conference, that uh deluxe, it on the nineteenth through the twenty first, you say?
Yeah.
That's nineteen through the twenty first.
Second.
Second.
Hold on one second, who made the motion?
He did.
He made it up.
He did, give it to him.
Motion made by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Hudson, any discussion?
Yeah, let me say this, that conference, and the development, and take that conference, and whatever we spend in pockets, uh, the dollars that we will be about to count.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
We all support that that was for the Southwest County Development.
And that's uh, I mean, you know, the information they got up there is kind of limited, but I did hear the diversity, equity, and inclusion, this book right here, and there's a couple of pages in here, I'm gonna make a copy of it and put it in y'all box. Uh, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Hudson?
Okay, the only thing I have is uh, on this on my meeting, we talked about the LeRai Center. And uh, I think Angela, the county attorney, she has heard to go and check into what the uh deduction would be for the insurance to do it, and I think there was fifty thousand dollars deduction, so it will be that for us to pay the cost and be uh turn it over to the insurance. So, uh, I'll be watching, continue getting it up.
Second.
I can offer.
And a motion by supervisor Hudson, she's gonna get a second. Second, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
Okay, what what would we begin? Right, I mean, but I know we
Yeah.
To uh
Seven thousand.
Seven?
Seven thousand.
Yeah, yeah, seven thousand.
So that's the lower D or something?
Yeah, and it's fifty thousand on the document, so it's only seven thousand, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Eyes out. Is that all you have? Supervisor Hudson?
That's all I have, that's all I have.
Supervisor Wilson?
Okay, uh the Wilkinson Road, not Wood Road, Wilson Road. We're gonna work on that, of course, Scott's counsel can't discuss that anymore. Uh, I would like to uh ask the board for a resolution for the Marx family, for Coach Bobby Marx, I'll get it passed and
So move.
Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
You did say Mark, about Mark, the Mark thing. Everyone's getting attorney's not here, those things, Penn Road. Y'all got a contractor out there to look there, somebody did, and they're gonna, they agreed to fix it.
Hey, oh, I invested in the new firm, and I paid their registration, uh, so they got it, and they're gonna uh do the work fixing, all good registration, what's out there, or the bird, or whatever, your wife.
Look at that. Okay, that concludes my report.
Supervisor Gaines?
Uh, yes, my, um first, I was just kinda wondering, I remember that vote was gonna be on February the eighteen about Morgantown Road, and I hadn't had any information or you know, last you said it.
There was supposed to be an email sent out, that said they got to lay it to home.
That's the age of Mark. Okay, okay, I mean, I got it, but uh, that's fine, that's fine, but that's fine. Uh, I'm actually checking on that, because we definitely, uh, as you can see, I can kinda tell this money going, everybody got an idea for money, and every time something come up and get fixed, it's gonna be that money. So sooner or later, if you don't move forward, it ain't gonna be no money, while we got opportunities, because I mean, uh we we need to look at that, and um, you know, uh, other question from the sheriff, if maybe he can answer, to give me some kinda update, where we at on the dollar cameras?
The last thing that you did was, that I can recall, was after you all approved it, we sent it to Project Noah, uh, Brian Project Noah, and and since President's there, you haven't heard that from him yet, actually, we just gonna actually start installing. But I'm expecting to hear from him in the next forty hours, so I called it, that you know, in sure, what day they actually gonna come out. I know he was talking about he would install it, and and actually said that they could come solve it.
Yeah, and I mean, and I'm still rushing, I thought after we got the approval that they was gonna be to start working on it. And you know, as you can see, it's definitely need uh for, but uh, that's what I wanted to know. Now, I wanna say something else, and after Sheriff, this is going back to the general public, you know, uh, I always say communication is key, and I think in the way of the world of today, people, everybody wanna blame people for uh somebody else for what's going on, and everybody wanna point other people to do something that they ain't gonna do. And it's just kinda we need to kinda take an issue, if it lifts it here from each other, you know what I'm saying? Nobody knows what happened, you know, people say, well, it's a parent, you don't know what kind of situation that parent in, that parent could be the one being threatened, it could be their life, you know what I'm saying? We gotta work together, and we always remember, no matter what, I know a lot of people talking about tough with gun laws, and I I'm not opposed, but remember, guns don't kill people, people kill people. The mentality, there's a bunch of people have guns all the time, a bunch of people who use guns for hunting, personal reasons and stuff like that, they don't kill people. People kill people, and it's a lot of time, we wanna address the gun, but we don't never address the mentality of the people who's holding those guns. And I think that's something we need to start it, because uh, just mentality, uh, some of the things that I was doing uh, when I first came for to be a supervisor, one of the things on my agenda was to make us not have neighborhoods, to have communities. And since COVID has strong up a little bit, I've been trying to ride uh and talk to some of these folks, and uh when neighborhood watch come up, be able to attend some of their meetings, when people start back having and people who don't have neighborhood watch programs, to get neighborhood watch uh programs, and as we communicate, because sometimes, something be going on at the front of the street that people at the back of the street have no idea. And I think when we can make our neighborhoods, communities again, it will help uh with some of our crime, but uh I just know we need to continue to pray and do what we can, one for another, because I know a lot of families, um go through a lot of hurt, and if we pay attention, I promise you, it's not our, just our community, it's our love. But we'll do what we need to do for ours together, and that concludes my report.
Uh, President, hello, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, uh, thank you for what I was going to bring you to up about the neighborhood watch, because I started my uh first neighborhood watch last Thursday, at the line. And um, we had a probably not to the turnout, and and probably because of the weather, but it did get keep though, and um, the sheriff was there, and I feel grateful, because he did explain to them about the crimes that's going on, and uh, he also was very attentive to their needs. And uh, we also had this captain up there to explain to them about how to call in that there's an emergency, and also crime solving, how how to kill, you know, your information is everything. So I am grateful that up, because we did start that in a better angle for them to who came out and took place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just got one here.
Uh, Mr. President, honored to be here, and I appreciate the board not testing my legal knowledge too much.
What's your mark?
Thanks for talking, Liz.
That is a good item, um, and Detective Richardson settled for January twenty, will you two just meet these records?
You heard the request?
So move.
Next, by supervisor Gaines, any second? Second. Second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Eyes out.
Thank you.
Danny Comestrier?
Yes, I have two things.
This one?
I mean, uh, this group also managed a modification from CCA, they got another increase to four million one hundred and seventy thousand, three seventy one, fifty two, for a increase in their payments.
All in. Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Okay, one other thing, I received uh two invoices from the sheriff department. One for nine thousand four seventy six ninety five, and the other one for thirty two thousand one sixty eight seventeen, and this for the patents for the new vehicles. That I guess came out on a separate invoice, there's no money in the budget for it. That's a total of forty one thousand six forty five twelve, and also, what? The last two, we did a budget amendment for sixty five thousand to pay for the leasing of the equipment, the invoice happened to be seventy two thousand four eighty five twenty three, so I need to do a budget amendment for forty nine thousand one hundred thirty thousand thirty thousand.
So move. Yeah, motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion?
I was just, I was just gonna remind y'all, when we first tried to do that with the cards, remember y'all the cards was financed one way, and y'all agreed to finance the other stuff in a bundle, everything else that y'all were able to account, the equipment and other other stuff to outfit, and so that's why it wasn't in the budget. Y'all had two separate groups of financing, for the look back, that's what you were financing. That's all.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Eyes out.
That's all I have.
Uh, we got broadly these other positions for sheriff's department. Um, we had a pay rate change for Makuria Virgil for hourly rate, she is deputy sheriff, patrol vision.
You did that one.
Huh?
You did that one.
We did that one?
Yeah, you just did that one, I, well, I thought you did it, that's the one who, oh, you didn't come back with it.
Uh, sixteen oh one, annual rate thirty three thousand three hundred dollars and eighty cents.
That's the one that was moved from from being correction officer, it's a train to get there.
You can do that on banks as well. I would do that.
What we did was Erica James, Robert Moore.
Yep, you do it, because he didn't have a sign contest.
That's right.
He didn't have a sign contest.
Train of persons, pay rate change, correction officer, gentleman, hourly rate thirteen twenty three.
That's bringing him up to the same standard for it.
Annual rate twenty seven five eighty seven.
Can I say something about that? Because the thing about it, he was asked for, he come there. Tasked that, and he asked for rates, and his people. task that, that, when he asked for rates, and his people, that he didn't get, they had to, yes. We shouldn't have double standards. We're gonna do it for one department, for their department, it's not even hard to ask for my people's rates.
Can I say you said a lot?
These people only been here since November, and when we, we agreed that when people come in as new hires, they were gonna go up to the five percent raise that people that were already here, that was already agreed with from the door. And now we have eight people that then became in November, that they're going to the same rate as the ones that were already here, we gave raises to. Another thing with this, uh, with those, they, they asked for three percent raise, on the other, they asked for three percent, but the raise is actually around, around the five percent, so I guess if, if y'all decide to give the raise, you can decide on if you're gonna get a five percent, because this is, the totals are five percent and not three percent. But they better say three percent raise.
And, and I'm gonna say that she is absolutely correct, I'm part of it, and these people, they can get their five percent raise, and y'all take the risk of it, because they hadn't been here long enough, and that's why they got, that's why they get this, because they have made it a year, I mean, that six months or whatever, but whatever y'all do, y'all do, but.
They came in November.
Everybody got a raise, we gave everybody a raise that worked here, but they was here.
When we gave raises, these people were not here.
Right.
They got hired in November.
What I'm saying, we gave everybody that worked here, but they was here one day or two days, everybody got five percent.
Yeah, that is not true.
Why?
It was, it was.
Oh, 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 that overcame the mainstream. Did everybody get, you're the boss, they did not?
I put mine on probation, I put mine on probation.
That's what you're talking about, two different.
I always done.
You have always done, and started off at, at, at certain amount, and then.
But it's clear mine, 'cause I got some of this home.
And then you put them up to what it should be.
Yeah, I got some.
Okay, then saw them off, and then Dean gave them a raise, am I right?
I, I put mine on probation, I'm only there with that.
Right, you put them on probation, and I'm saw them off in that, that's right, and then, and then after probation, you put them up to what it should be, not what it should be at first, and then after, and then you give them a raise.
No, I'm good, you're correct. And, and let me say this, we've been doing that for six years too, we always have had a probation period, and then when they get through and get certified, move them up to wherever everybody else made, that's, that's what we've already done.
This hasn't happened, Dan. Because you were pulling these people up, that just started in November, to what the, what the new people got, the older ones who got the five percent raise, and we agreed that we were not going to do that.
And if you go back to the little.
I can go back.
Throughout the history, you will see that children ain't never really made no job than any other one, it's, it's never been like that.
Yeah, I can just pull one name up.
Just don't hold up to me, y'all do yours out there too.
I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not saying, if you don't, if you wanna do it, it's okay, I'm saying it's not okay to pan pick.
Pan pick.
Or pan pick a certain department, when somebody just came at the last meeting, asking for a raise for their department, am, am I correct?
Yeah. I ain't talking about those departments, I've been doing.
You know what I'm saying, I, I was gonna want to, you know, regardless of what y'all do, you know what I'm saying, I, I was gonna wanna ask a question about, 'cause I felt like Dan should got his raise for his people, but it was voted down, they, they pushed it out, but that, if you remember, I asked a question, uh, I was far enough to ask a question, well, since he's an elected official, and he have paid, they got it for these people, why don't we control, uh, what is people pay, because they work, and then, I mean, I think it was a claim that he works in the, the money comes out, even though he's elected official, they said the money come from out of the general fund in the county, so you know what I'm saying, so whatever they do, I mean, I, I still say, uh, I don't know how I go, I don't really get into that, but I'm a firm believer that I turn people who's independent to run their department, I know not what they do, or their, their operation, and I definitely don't, uh, put the county in a deficit, but I still, and then that's how one, one, uh, person, anybody comes over here, and you know if it's not, if it's in reasonable doubt, and they need those people, they're working those people, they can tell me more what their people need than I can, so definitely, the people work above you, and that's just my take on it, and I, I'm gonna give it to you, so we can go on, do what we gonna do, and move forward.
But the amounts, that's on the sheets, I'm not correct. That's, that's, that's not a three percent, that's a, that's a five percent raise, but they better asking for a three percent raise.
Let me ask you this, Dean, uh, so if we talking about probationary periods, what would you also guess on probationary periods, since we about, since this is what we been doing six years?
That's you.
I'm asking.
That's your decision.
She said it now, I'm saying it either.
That's your decision.
I'm asking y'all.
Well, first of all, hold up, hold up, no, 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 hold up, first of all, this is a unique situation, because, uh, we just gave raises, a five, everybody got a raise. Every year, everybody don't get a raise, so you, you, you don't bring nobody up to where somebody at, else at, because we don't do a raise every year. That's the difference. We don't do a raise every year, thi- this happened to be the year that, still, we gave some people two dollars, we gave some people a five percent raise. Now, I understand what she's saying, when you, when you hire somebody at thirteen oh one, then they stay here, you giving them a five percent raise to bring them up to everybody else. Uh, when is the start off, when do they start off with, or whatever K may be?
Start off at twelve sixty, that's why I was trying to get my people, when they come out probationary period, what we all would do, so they could quit making less than wings. When this right now, and that's just starting off at fourteen dollars, I would go to the side.
That's just a, uh.
It may be.
That's just a, uh, thing they got out there, go out there and find out.
But you asking though, and that's what I'm saying, we've always had a probationary period, now, he can go back and forth on what it is, or what it was, but.
No, check, let me explain something, let me explain something, let me explain something. Just say, you starting your people off with, just say twelve fifty, probationary period, and once they do their six months or whatever, you give them fifty cent more. That ain't got nothing to do with five percent raise that we give across the board.
Right.
That's what she's saying.
Well, if it's three, whatever.
It's not three, it's nothing.
That's, that, that ain't accurate, I forget, I hate to say it, but it's not, 'cause we, we have been doing this, and, and we have been doing this for years. That, that, whenever I'm out of probationary period, they always get off of, 'cause at one point, it was twelve, they got moved to twelve sixty. I'm telling you, it was, I wouldn't be asking for it if it was.
That's, that's what we need to do. Well, look, here's what we need to do, just go do the research, and if it was always done like that, then you can't, not, we cannot not do it again.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just do the research.
But let me say this too, you wonder why people still make the same thing happen, being, oh, let me finish, let me just go and make this point. If y'all wonder why somebody coming in and been here one year, catch up with the people that's been here four or five years, you know why that is? Because there is no escalation in your pay, unless the board step up and say, we gonna put a step ladder in like the city, step play like the city guy, it's gonna always be like that, that will never change, and that's why, that's why I'm sitting and reading this all right now. The one time they get that change is when they come out of probation, and that's it, until the board decides to do another raise period.
Well.
That's it, and I would ask for it, I would ask you to get paid for education and that.
Here go the case, here's the problem, have a budget, and this particular time, every three months, we supposed to be reviewing that budget, this particular time, now, if you go over your budget, then we ain't pu- we ain't putting a budget in place for everybody to go over their budget, then we gotta go put some more money in everybody's budget, 'cause they gonna went over their budget. That's, that's the reason you supposed to stay in your budget, everybody's supposed to do that.
You gotta.
I did put my person employee, and when that employee came in, in October of twenty, they were making twelve sixty, they did not get the five percent raise, they moved to thirteen twenty-three in, in, uh, October twenty-one, with everybody else, so, so when they came in, they came in at twelve sixty, they did not get a ninety-day raise after their ninety days. And I can pull all, I can.
Only way you gotta look at this, y'all, if you hire somebody, then do they deserve to get a five percent raise, if we raised the whole county with, just 'cause you hired them at a certain price? Do they deserve to get a five percent raise? Because we raised everybody else in the county, and then we put it in the budget, is it in the budget? It's not in the budget.
When you talk about specialized, my people over there getting business due draw on it right now, I just sent y'all videos of jail flood on it right now. You know how hard it is to sit here and fight over sixty cents or somebody?
That chair.
I'm just saying, man, y'all, y'all talk about, when you talk about what people have to deal with every day, and you go on these sales, and you getting attacked, and all this stuff, and we have to fight like this.
We ain't fighting, it's a right and a wrong way to do it.
But I'm just saying, it has happened.
Do it, do it the right way, and we gonna be tight.
I'm in agreement with that, and I'm in agreement, we need to start having real budget meetings again, because we talk about, boy, the last two times, the, the last time, we didn't handle it, the budget was already set, and when you look at what was spent versus what we got, we seven hundred thousand dollars next. So when you talk about doing what's right, do what's right, and let's talk about that, and I'm good with it.
Did you, uh, when you hired these people on, were they under the guise that they were on, on probation, probationary pay, and they were gonna be escalated?
Okay, well, I don't know how we're not going to do that, some of that, uh, so we gotta figure out how. And let me say this, the other thing I did.
Somewhere else, I'm gonna have to do that.
And the other thing I did was, I called back down into the OJT people again, to see why we not back in that program and pay six months of that salary, and again, there's some hangup between here and HR, and I'm not blaming the HR, or something didn't get signed. That six months of salary that the county is losing, 'cause we went and put together a two-hundred-and-forty-hour comprehensive OJT, uh, training plan, just so the county can get reimbursed, that ain't no way.
It ain't just, yeah, that's what you said.
Well, what I'm just saying though, we still not approved, because whoever paid was not coming.
But you checking to what, find out.
And she, I'm not saying she be hitting it now.
All right, supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Okay, let me say this, I'm just probably with y'all. My business, I thought the plan that was put back in place, because I know that, that question was to put back in place, uh, with the, uh, training, and someone said, yes, um, hopefully it will get put back in place, I could just say, that six months we losing. But let me say this, this is the way we always did this, and probably neither none of y'all was on board, but this is the way that it's been done in the country. If a jailer or a deputy came on, whatever that prison deputy was making, or that jailer, that's the new person came on there. Because they doing the same job, they couldn't, the deputies are putting their life on the line, just like the other F T L. Now, I don't know what position this is, that he tried to hire in, but I know if it was a deputy or a jailer, they came on, it was a further purpose was making, whether they got a percent increase or not.
In this, in this stack, we have, in this stack, we have one deputy, three correctional officers, and one transport officer. Right.
Okay.
And the transport.
They should be making the same as the other deputies and the jailers.
You got, you got, you got positions for different positions, you don't make the same.
Now, that transport position, that's always been a salary, go ahead. The same with jails.
I'm not talking about like majors and stuff like that, just a major and stuff like that, that's what they're doing.
No, that's not what I'm talking.
But it is just a, and they should be making what the other deputy was making.
Supervisor, Dan.
Well, you know, clearly, one time I would say, you know, and, and that's why I brought up that conversation, we are definitely not on the same page when it comes to making, paying, nobody getting paid, we, we definitely on the same page, because every time somebody come for the board, and it needs some money, it's a long discussion, and nine times out of ten, ain't nobody gonna get none, I'm not saying break it, and it's not just this department, not this half, we not the sheriff, it's just, uh, everybody, I, since I've been here a couple years, everybody been trying out, it ain't just our hand, this started way before Andrew was came administrator, it's been there, but one of the things there, uh, we don't realize, we've been doing a lot of stuff a lot of different ways, the world changed every single day, every day. You coming here right now, and everybody talking about crime, people putting together, fighting crime, everything else, so what you think about those same people that dress up in those suits, that go out there, that twenty years ago, that you can talk to people, and now right now, they taking a chance on their life, is it a difference in that? Is it a difference in the air? Everything changed, I'm not saying for one reason or another, to give Mr. The Sheriff this, I'm not saying that did it. Uh, we did it the old day, but I'm just saying, it's something that we, actually we can look at, because you wonder why some of the things are revolving door in our county. It's a revolving door, and right now, we got a budget. And we can't break the budget, you know what I'm saying, I'm not asking us to break the budget, I want to stand our guard now. But anyway, though, if we gonna have to look at somewhere or another to compensate the folks around here, and not just the Sheriff's Department, and we did compensate, I'm just saying, we gotta look at, open it, open it up, and look at some things, because you see people going in and out every day, and why, why do we lose most people?
I just hand, I just handed those three, uh, those five back to Sheriff Patton, I want him to go through each one and explain.
Well, okay, on the Curia Virgil, the reason why her pay is changing, because she wants a different position. Now, she's coming from the jail, and now she starting to train as a deputy, she starting, so that's why I went from, from her old salary to her new salary.
You wanna do these individually, I'm doing this group.
So moved.
Motion, my supervisor.
Uh, they different, but I, I don't have problems explaining it, whatever we need to put in place, I'm good.
The Curia Virgil.
We gonna carry it.
N A K E R I, Virgil, uh, D I R G I.
We gonna carry it. Motion, my supervisor Gray, same, my supervisor Gaines, any discussion? Man, I think I leave you on comfort.
You were tapped out. So now that's set for you, it was switched to fall apart, not sure we got it.
All right, thank you, any discussion, ladies? All in favor? Uh, all opposed, ayes, ayes.
With Blake Matthews, he's coming from the UCor to transport, transport has always made more than other correction officers, because they are on, and their train, their train was completely different from what they did. This has always been the salary, which is fourteen twenty-three, I would, that always been the salary for transport. So that's why he moved from his jailer's salary to the transport, 'cause he's now my transport officer.
Sliding here.
Matthew, so who?
Yeah, motion, my supervisor Wilson, same, my supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed, ayes, ayes.
I could believe Patterson, Ashley Miles, and Coach Redd. It's whatever y'all decide to do on this, uh, I asked for them to go to thirteen twenty-three, because they have came out of their probationary period, and they have completed their corrections officer training, which is when you do that plus, you came out, but you, you certified now, and not everybody over there certified, so that's why I asked for them to go to the rate of a normal correction officer, which is thirty.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Next question.
Uh, one question I have is, the lowest paid, uh, jailer over there is how much?
Twelve sixty, and that was the one that I was.
No, no, everybody gonna make the same thing, right?
Right.
So you moving them up to thirteen?
Twenty-three.
So everybody over there not make?
All the correction officers make thirteen twenty-three, and then the correction sergeant make, I think, fourteen twenty-three, I'm not saying.
So the lowest paid position over there? So the lowest paid position over there right now is gonna be thirteen twenty-three?
Uh, after they come out probationary, yes.
They gonna make the same thing everybody else?
Yes, sir. And that's what we bothered to do. We give them a chance to come through and complete the training and certify and everything.
I'm done with it. I'm done. Anybody else got questions? You heard the question, Sheriff. So move. Motion by supervisor Wilson, saying by supervisor Gray. Any discussion?
Uh, ain't no discussion. I just wanna make a comment. Uh, from now on, when we do our budget, uh, we need, we need to do a good job of communicating and explaining uh, when people come in, that's one thing, and 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 that if they on probation, then you gonna move them up to where everybody else at. And make sure everybody at the table understand it, so when we do our budget, we can compensate for that amount in our budget.
And I agree with you on that a hundred percent. And the reason why I know we can do this is because there's certain positions I ain't finna put back up there. I know it because I can't because the money's not there, so I'm trying to work within my budget. While I'm trying to keep staff too, because right now they over there, they will bust the sewer line. If you hawk out there on the sidewalk, you can see it running down the sidewalk right now. And it's just, it's, right, hang on, hang on, hang on, say that. But I would like to do is this.
Oh, let me carry that motion.
I would.
We move on.
All in favor? All right, all opposed? Eyes up.
I would like to present something to the board, though I bring it back to next board meeting or whatever for future. I would like to present a pro, a proposal to where you can put it in the budget where it's sort of like step, where you get credit for for your college and things of that nature, so people will have incentive if we not gonna do it on the table face. But I ain't talking about for this year.
Well, I feel like we're not doing the budget tag.
I'm not talking about. I do wanna bring it back to you all. That way you can have all the right.
All right, next in here, uh, supervisor Grant, when you talked about this N O S A meeting they're having, you brought up something about the housing, that goes education. Did you talk about that?
Yeah, I said they made a proposal to us and.
So there's a letter in here from Miss George Arthur Mathis, that said they're having a meeting at the Chatsworth eleven AM on Monday, February twenty-eighth. Anyone wants to attend?
We're twenty-three. At what time? Eleven AM.
Yes.
Uh, supervisor, I mean, uh, President Herbert.
Yes, ma'am.
Could she ask the uh for that, uh, that she can send it out there and watch those, if it be put on the calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next is a letter of resignation from Miss Frances Bello. I will be retiring from the county. I will, uh, this has been a journey working for the Chatsworth Supervisors since April twenty-fourth nineteen ninety-six. However, the journey's approaching, and for me, I'll be retiring from the county on April twenty-ninth two thousand twenty-two. Pardon says confirm my retirement date, I will wait my paperwork package. April twenty-ninth. Thank you for all of your help and directions throughout our time together. You definitely the best light in my life. Very true yours, Frances Bello. Revolution hanging out.
So move.
Say.
Yeah, how much paper motion for a representative?
Motion by supervisor Wilson, saying by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes up.
Mr. President, uh, saying something about a revolution. Supervisor Houston saying something about a resolution.
Make more tax, yeah, a resolution.
Just a little.
Yeah, so his motion will finish that resolution, huh?
Yeah.
All right, supervisor Hudson's making a motion for a resolution. Can you say? Saying by supervisor Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes up.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, if, uh, I think we need to go, uh, if this ain't that this, we need that mission, we need to advertise. Where we can try to get that individual in to give a word to Frances. If the individual is not already here.
I I think we need to go ahead and start that, that's right. So move. Motion by supervisor Gray, can you make a second?
Sir.
Saying by supervisor Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next is, uh, a jury, a jury commission appointee. There are three jury commissioners. One's appointed by a circuit judge, one is appointed by a chancery judge, and one is appointed by one supervisor. Uh, according to Eva, there, we need to have this appointee by April. So, um, if y'all believe this is in the folder, it kind of unless there are qualifications, y'all will talk to Eva before, but we need to look into that at the next meeting, drive that plus by you. Still have leadership matches that we have to address. Does anyone have a chance to think about a candidate for that?
All right.
Huh?
I have.
February twenty-fourth is when the uh, two day retreat began.
Yeah, twenty-fourth.
We said we were gonna handle it at this meeting.
For that meeting?
Uh, this is a, even when I told them, yeah, to put a county employee into the leadership national class now.
I tell you who would possibly go on, you may need to ask, though, that could turn out.
She been in it?
No. What was that?
Do we ask? Do we want to make a motion pending her accepting it?
They need to.
Yeah. This is a good one.
No, I don't have a good one.
Can I make a motion pending that she's a, motion by supervisor Gray? Saying by supervisor Wilson.
Saying.
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Angel have that second. She's my mistress every time. With the delight.
Can I have that? I see that I have eight of those, but that's what happened.
All. Saying by supervisor Houghton. All in favor? All opposed? Oh. All right, last meeting, I brought up the private Albon that we had discussed. Uh, I asked everybody to come gather to the list. What I have on the list, and we discussed this, if anybody wants to tweak it, we talked about Chester Willis, girl softball complex, rodeo arena, digitizing the documents, and then taking the remainder money, putting it in each parking districts, and put it on a toward table. Uh, we gonna, we gonna put Brian O'Callaghan.
I don't know.
I don't know. Well, that's under that park.
Yeah, that's.
That's under those parks. The parks in each district. The parks in each district. And I think that number, the map, way I worked the map, that number should leave somewhere around two point seven million dollars to be used in parks and in resursing.
Yes. Well, we, but we need to figure it out too, because uh, one question I did, I do need to make sure, uh, because I I I had a question. Uh, I was supposed to get some information presented to me uh, today about that unit of park, uh, maybe it's such as to shed a little more light on it. I I happen to, we did a service the other day at at airport, and they said that, uh, is that, that they would have a list for some county equipment, so I do wanna add that in, especially that, uh, that park, that's just one of our parks, right at the airport fish, unit of park.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I took a lot of, uh, that's where we want them all, probably. And we had put it all up.
You need to check on that.
No, I said, hold on, hold on, hold on. Well, we, okay, well, if there's something, we need definitely get that clarified because I just, uh, was, uh, approaching Sunday at the service, and they said that they were gonna give me a list, so I need, you know, that that's something that they need to defend, we need to tell them, so I can let them know it's actually a problem.
I mean, I think that's owned by the airport commission, and they always do the.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, um, you sure that's all by the airport, or, uh, uh, is it, hey, that's something we need to look into, does that make? I thought.
I didn't say that. Mr. uh, Mr. Kenny Cowan's still in here. He said it is all by the airport.
Okay.
Oh. So I I I would like to make a motion to adopt this and move forward. We, uh.
Discussion.
All right, you have much in a second. Any discussion?
Discussion. All right. Now, this is, this is my discussion, you know, I I have no problem with with definitely doing that, but, you know, this, we, I don't wanna go off. We gonna make sure we have some money to do more than Town Road, so we spend five million dollars for recreation and that, I mean.
Hey. Uh, from what I'm understanding, it's gotta need to look at it, uh, at the, at the end of the day, A R P, whatever money can be used for that.
Okay, okay. Make sure.
Take all of it. A R P money because we're gonna count claim all of our funds under the exemption that they can, it can be used for any general, uh, county, anything that, it can be used for anything, basically, that the county can not condit, can normally, they wish it to withdraw. Yeah.
The la, the latest, go ahead, supervisor. Latest update that I've got from the lobbyists is that they are still in very good negotiations in D C, and they hope to have it up in March. They feel very comfortable. They got option one, two, and three, and they feel that we are going to get the funding for more than Town Road. And I I I take your, go from that. My concern with this fund is rates are about to go up. If we, we, we need to, we need to move forward to go this long.
It would, it wouldn't work in Town Road, even with the funding that we expect to get from the federal government, there's still be some action funds that we have to do, and that's gonna be, it's not gonna be anything to sneeze at. Um, but it's certainly will, the fund of federal money will help us.
I'm here. All in favor?
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes up.
And the other reason, I also was pushing, we were talking about more than Town Road is this. Uh, the more we move it down the road, just like that bond increasing, if you realize material is increasing ten, fifteen, twenty percent, uh, uh, every day, and if we could kick it down the road, we'll be applying for, uh, we need to say two point four or whatever grants over there, it'll end up being five million dollars if we keep it down the road. Now, not quite five, but I'm saying it's increasing. So that's why the urgency for that also with the price increase, uh, everything is just kind of going wild right now.
Supervisor Gaines. Uh, I feel like this. We don't play around with Martin Town Road long enough. Uh, they need to give us a deadline on what they doing, because they keep saying it's gonna happen in February, and now they said it gonna happen in March, before you look, look at it, it's gonna be at the end of the year, and that's all potato. That ain't gonna happen. We need to go and get this done, uh, talk to them lobbyists, our people, consultants, and give them another week or two or whatever the case, at least at the end of March. After, if they can't get that done at the end of March, we need to take care of business because it's gonna, it's gonna be hard to sign a contract. Because anybody, anybody got a working all over thing. And, uh, you don't wanna be going into two thousand and twenty-four with Martin Town Road all messed up. You don't wanna do that.
Mr. King, are you done?
I'm done.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Five million nine hundred thousand dollars do seem like a lot of money. But I'm sitting, and I'm listening to every supervisor saying, oh, we can do this, and we can do this. And I'm adding, and I'm adding up more than five million nine hundred thousand, so it's like.
Hold on, now the bond ain't coming out of that thing. The parks is not coming out of it.
Okay.
That box, the park, the, the bond is something told you.
The bond will be butchered by the Iowa, Iowa lady.
Yeah, so that, that.
Well, I'm still. I'm, I'm still counting.
Only thing we bitching about five million dollars is Martin Town. We ain't missing none there.
I thought you was talking about earlier.
You talking about what I was talking about.
But I know sometimes we say.
That's legit money, though.
Yeah, some, some of them, we're saying, we're, you and I, A R P money, we use the A R P money, ain't gonna be no more A R P money.
It's not, because it's not everybody saying, oh, we do this with that, and we do that with that, and I'm adding up the money, and I'm not, you know.
And we trying to get that, yeah?
Yeah.
Anyway, I believe, uh, we got an eye for a big determine.
See, might get some money from this. This told to get money, yeah.
Your motion, my supervisor Hudson, can you make a second? Second, my supervisor Gaines. All in favor?